Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Armada Township Planning Commission meeting. It's nice to see all. Nice to hear that I'm as close as I can to the mic just about.
I can't hear you.
I can't get much closer. Anyways, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could all stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, can we have a roll call, please? Here.
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 Chad.
Here.
Ben.
Here.
Javara.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
And Nicole.
Next, we have approve or amend the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the approval of last month's meeting. That was May 7th of 2025. If there are no changes, a motion would be in order to approve the minutes as presented.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have public comments. But these are going to be public comments of items not on the agenda. When we have our public hearings, we have two public hearings tonight. I'll go through that process once we, if anybody has any comments right now that they want to make on non-agenda items, please come up. And there are none at that time. Oh, Marcia.
Marcia Hollins, Armada Ridge Road. It says here, agenda items, public comments, agenda items.
Right.
I don't understand, I'm sorry.
If you want, if you, we're not going to comment right now on the two public hearings because we have, we have separate public, open to the public.
Number 12 says non-agenda items, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
But we're not, because we already have the public hearings that does have the public comments for those hearings, it's best to try and keep that all together because those at the public hearing all have to be recorded, the person's name and address also, and that is a separate hearing. It's like basically a different type meeting.
Thank you.
There are meetings within meetings.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other public comments, we will move on. And now I'm going to take just a moment to explain the order of procedure at a public hearing. It'll be just like the beginning of a meeting. It'll be called to order, there'll be a roll call. We're going to confirm the public notices. The petitioner will speak, our planner will then speak. Then there'll be citizens' comments, or any emails or mails will be read. And then there'll be questions from the commissioners or comments. And then we will close the public hearing. Later on, on the agenda, is when a decision will be made. At the public hearing, there are no decisions made, just so you know. But later on in the agenda, that's when your, your decisions regarding whether it be approved, denied, or postponed. That's when you'll find that out. So, and then also, when you have a public comment, if you would please step up to the podium and please print your name and your address because we do have to have that for the public hearing. And with that note, I would like a motion to open the first public hearing regarding a rezoning at 69475 Romeo Plank, parcel ID 130231400035, from R1 Residential District to B1 Business District. Excuse me, is there such a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Can I have? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, so do we have the applicant here? Okay, if you'd like to step up and state your name and present.
Yes, hi, I'm Chad Asman. I represent my clients, the Soakana family, and Frontier Farm Market. I am the architect. Been working with them, just looking at this new parcel. They're recent owners, so we recently purchased the property. And we got the whole, you know, the whole farm in the market area. And then it came with two structures. So it had a secondary structure that was being operated as a bakery, as an agribakery. So it was basically, you know, utilizing the items on the, on the site in the business and just selling there. That bakery, that tenant, they wanted to do a little bit more expansion, so do more in terms of mercantile. And my clients had bought it, really wanted to just enhance Armada because they are, you know, one, it's Sam and Amy, and Sam is the farmer. He loves to farm. But they also own Frontier Town in Romeo. And so it's one of those things that they're very familiar with, this kind of a, of a thing. So they wanted to bring the same thing to Armada. And so when we were looking at it, we were looking at these two structures and having one of the structures be this traditional farm market, you know, selling all of the stuff that's there. And the other one, as this bakery, being able to be able to sell not just the items from what comes from the farm, but also being able to sell wholesale there as well, in terms of mercantile. So we went and addressed that, you know, thinking that that was kind of how it was all along. We realized it wasn't how it was. And so we needed to come and, and, and take care of that. So we wanted to figure out a way, because we want to follow all the rules, do all the right things. And so we wanted to figure out a way, how can we make this work on our property? So what we did is we went for, we're looking at doing a potential lot split, but before that, we would have to have that area rezoned to a B1. B1 is, is very close, there's B1 right there on the corner. In fact, there's only one parcel that separates our parcel from the B1. And actually, right now, we have a lease on that parcel. We're farming that parcel for that owner. And so we're really connected to that B1 area. So we don't feel like it's a, it's a far stretch to go, hey, we wanted to add this B1 section there, allowing us to be able to have that, have that existing tenant with the bakery. In addition to that, we just feel like in terms of what we can do just for the site, making sure that we're following our rules, it also adds, you know, it's, it's, right now, it's, it's semi-serving as mercantile. So we want to make sure too, that that tax base is appropriately set up for the township. And so we want to do that as well. And so we're really excited about this opportunity. We're excited to present it. We've, in all of the aspects, we tried hard to meet all of the minimum requirements. The only thing that is a challenge is that we have, the buildings are existing. So when we split right down the middle, we are infringing on the minimums on one side. So on one side of the building, the minimum for a B1, we're infringing by about seven feet. So we want to make sure, just want to note that out. Outside of that, we even took into account for the future planning of the right of way if Romeo Plank does expand at that point. We planned the, we planned the property to be able to accommodate that as well. And so we're really excited, we're excited about being in the community. We're excited about doing the best we can to be able to enhance the community. And we're hoping that we'll be able to get this rezoning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caitlin?
Hi, everyone, I'm Caitlin Habe, and I'm the planning consultant for the township with Wade Trim. So in front of the planning commission, you should have my May 19th review letter. That kind of goes through that, that whole analysis. And so the proposed parcel would be a little bit less than one acre total. They are currently zoned R1 and are requesting to be B1. As provided in your packet, I provided what the current zoning district, what does that definition look like? So your residential is intended to be residential and looking at it being near proximity to the village of Armada or village of Romeo. If you look at the definition for business district, the one they're proposing to go to, that is something that's intended to be for a variety of commercial uses, for service, business, entertainment. They're ensuring that you don't cause traffic issues, but you want to make sure they're carefully planned because they are anticipated to be adjacent to residential areas. It is intended to be a transitional district. After that, what we have is a future land use. Again, our master plan is the basis for a lot of these rezoning decisions. And we want to be consistent with that plan. We just adopted it not too long ago. But it's trying to vision where do we want to go. And the future land use map is intended to be a fluffy idea of generally, we want to see this area move in this direction, either commercially, or residentially, or agriculturally. That's what the master plan is intended to do. It's not the zoning ordinance where it's, it's this parcel is this color and this parcel's this color. If it's not the same, that's not consistent. There is some level of, we cannot predict the future perfectly. So when you look at the future land use classification, district descriptions, the single-family residential, which is, currently is, is intended to be for future density, where you could potentially have sewer service. The future land use classification for this subject parcel would be flexible residential, which does allow for, which is neighboring to this area, is B1. So B1 is considered that flexible residential, which is nearby, as opposed to commercial outright, which is a combination of B1 and B2. So when we get into the board discussion, I will go more in depth on our standards A through, or yeah, N, associated with this rezoning request. One thing I do want to note is that the other maps that I provided kind of give you a zoom in of the zoning map of where it is currently. You can look at the future land use map. Again, the intersection has commercial around it. Next to that, you have the transitional district that mixed. And then this parcel's one north of that. And so we can further discuss all of those standards, but one of the chief ones is, is this consistent with our master plan? So I think that's a brief summary of where this request is. I'd like to remind the planning commission too, that when we do a rezoning decisions, it's for everything, though we have an applicant that triggers it. When we rezone a property, it could be any use within that district. And it's nothing about, about an applicant or anything of that nature, but we try to be very mindful when we make these decisions because they're lasting. And so when they, we approve, if we were to approve a rezoning, the next step would be to go to the township board for their official approval status. We want to make sure that that's the direction our com, our community is comfortable with. I don't know, Madam Chair, if you wanted to also remind the public about it being a three-minute timer for public comment?
I will, when it's time for that. And also, I apologize, I forgot to mention the notices that were in, that was in the paper and also the list of who was notified also. And then, if you're finished?
Yes, I am finished.
Okay, so then at this time, anyone, if you'd please step up to the podium if you have any comments regarding this. And please make sure to sign in and try and limit it to about three minutes, if you could. Are there any comments, public comments, for the frontier rezoning? Okay, so we have nothing.
Okay.
So, next then, it would be our commissioners. Any comments or questions that you would like to ask? I did have one, and it was regarding, since it's 0.9 acre split, is that something that would be actually allowed in the township?
Yep.
That small of a split?
Yep, because the minimum lot area is the 30,000. So we can talk about the non-conformity component because it wouldn't be a non-conforming lot. It would make a non-conforming building.
Okay. DJ?
I've got a couple of questions. So we're looking at rezoning from R1 to B1. Does the B1 allow them to do what they would like to do? I can see where they can do this, the sale of merchandise and things, but the baking and processing, is that?
I considered it a retail with an accessory workshop because there is that commercial kitchen space. So if you were to more or less have somebody that's a crafter or something like that, the mo, majority of that operation is that they're making something and then they're selling it, and they might distribute it out of their shop or something like that to supply it to other areas. So that seemed to be appropriate based on the list of uses that we have.
Okay. Because the only other one I see is in the industrial district, and certainly we don't want to.
Correct.
Okay.
You said it seemed to be appropriate. I had the same question too. And what's your concerns that would be?
That would be my recommend, that would be my use recommendation, is that's the category it goes under.
All right.
It's that retail with a workshop. Ultimately, they're making goods, they're selling those goods. It is not a restaurant where they're making it and then serving it directly. They're making those different goods, sometimes wholesaling it, is my understanding, but other times, customers walking in and doing their own thing.
So there's not going to be, well, let me, should I direct it to them instead? Is it Chad?
Yeah.
Can you step up? Is this going to be a storefront?
Yeah, so right now, our original.
For selling?
Yeah, for selling. That's what we're planning to do, is, is to have as mercantile. If something, say, down the future came, because as Caitlin said, that it's, it's, it's a possible, it lasts forever. So what's great is in the ordinance, anything like you had just brought, spoke about a restaurant, if we did say, hey, we wanted to put something that was more like a cafe in there, we would have to come back for a special land use.
So there's not going to be any scene and for?
At our, right now, we're just planning to sell things.
Okay, very good.
So we're just planning to sell, because right now, it's not, it does actually have a commercial kitchen in it. It has like a, because she operated with just a convection, so there was no hood. And so it was just the preparation, so it was more like a prep kitchen with baking. So that, right now, is, is, and then they would just sell. So she would sell her, her baked goods out of there, and then she was selling them wholesale. And so that would be like the same thing. But then it would also open the door is that, you know, my clients deal with a lot of artisans. And so if there's all of a sudden an artisan that decided they wanted to come in, like with a woodchop or something like that, they would come in and then be able to sell their goods alongside of us selling all of our, our, our products from the farm.
There is a reason I'm asking that, but very good.
Okay.
Yes, please.
I look, I see on the agenda that we're looking at rezoning. Are we just looking at the rezoning and not a site plan approval at this point?
Correct.
One more question. I don't know if it should be now or later. So the, the baking of the bread is not like a processing, is it? Like a processing type thing? I mean, it's not a manufacturing thing, I guess, is what I'm, I'm curious. Is that considered manufacturing of bread? Or how does that work?
So I consider that more of the accessory component. So the, the bigger component is the retail component. And so you can have a manufacturing accessory that's, again, it's directly related to what's going on on site.
Okay.
So I think it is appropriate within some gravity because their operation is not leaning towards being industrial.
You used the word workshop, like an artisan workshop?
Correct.
Instead of a, a manufacturing facility?
Correct. Now, if they get so big that, again, proportionally, it looks a lot different, then, then we can have that conversation if they're making that big of an expansion. But at this point, that is not the predominant use.
Okay, one more question then also, then with the rezoning, and if it go, if we rezone it to B1, on this 0.9 acre, is there enough parking for that? And, and a driveway parking and?
That is a site plan comment.
Okay.
So when they come back, that's something that can be addressed. There are a variety of different components. They do have parking, I believe, just north of the property they also own, is my understanding. So they could do a joint parking agreement or something of that nature.
That can be done. That's what I was curious about.
And so we're just not there yet in our journey. This is the first part, so then you can do the lot split. It can go through the assessing office and then probably come for that site plan review.
Okay.
Caitlin, I can speak that too. Like what we did is, in our preliminary evaluations of the parking, because it is a, it's a gravel lot, we actually went through and was figuring out what is all the parking that we need. With it being the same owner, it allows us to be able to easily do a, like a shared parking agreement that does it. In addition to that, the frontage that we have currently, we planted with wildflowers, and we use those wildflowers in, in some of the things that we sell. But if we had to expand, we can expand that way, or we can also expand to the north and have, and have the parking we need based on the use that we put in there.
So it'd be an impervious surface.
Yeah, it'd be the same, it'd be the same, yeah. We just keep, we would just kind of, what's that?
We're not, we're not there yet in our site plan.
On site plan.
We're not there yet.
Yes.
Thinking of water. So for standard E, it's, there's no sewage in that, in that B1 district at this time?
Correct.
Okay. Because so it's not a restaurant or nursery school or large, it doesn't have a large population that would require that.
Correct.
Under the B1 standard, that's a B2?
So regarding standard E with the rezoning request, this is talking about there would be sufficient capacity. Since there is no public utility services, do they have sufficient on-site? And so generally speaking, it would seem like they would. Some of that, I believe, is already in place. We're not to the site plan components, I can't quite speak to that. The county would ultimately be involved in that with the health department. And so we would really lean on them to say, is this sufficient?
Commissioners, any other questions?
I'll wait. I have a question from the past. We had a pie company come in here, and they came in front of us for a rezoning of B1. And they were denied for it because they says it was a, it needed to be entered to M1 or their pie baking and the sales of the pies. I'm just kind of wondering, what's the difference between this and that?
So that I can't speak to, I was not here when, whatever application that was. I can tell you that in other municipalities, if it happened to be the same pie company, the reason it would only be allowed in industrials opposed to having some discretion to consider to this retail is that it's literally, no one can walk in and come and get a pie. If they are literally just manufacturing and processing food, then that is more appropriate in industrial.
They had the public coming in.
Then I don't know. I know that.
And this is why I kind of bring this up, is if we okay this, then the pie company can come back and say.
So there have been some series of different zoning changes since then too. So I don't know that you have the same zoning book that applies to the same situation there.
The B1 is basically the same, ain't it?
B1?
It really hasn't changed.
It's changed to B2.
It did split.
It's split, but the B1 is kind of still the same.
That's the answer I have. I don't, I don't know otherwise.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I can make a comment on that. I think that the, this is more of a farm component where it's more of an accessory use, the baking, where the other was a full-fledged manufacturing, not an accessory use. That's what I remember from that, but it was more, much more intense.
They, they were buying their product to make the pies from other companies. And I'm taking that this is the same one thing? You're not going to be growing everything on the property and baking your breads and all that?
Currently, we do. So currently, the only thing that we don't have, I mean, is because, you know, they, it's, a lot of the products are sourdough products, so there's the starter, there's flour, there's water. The water comes from site. But then, you know, things like the carrots that go in the, in the carrots, the jalapenos, some of those things.
So you're going to grow all that then?
We do grow that right now.
Okay.
So we grow like, right now, like, last time I was out there, literally, Sam was out there cleaning carrots. So we have a lot of that that's growing there. But as of right now, it's, it's, it's just going to be that, you know, that retail operation where it's more meant for artisan. And that's, and we didn't assign, in terms of lot size, we wanted to make sure that the lot size was appropriate for what the, what it would need to be for the ordinance, but then was not excessive, where it would ma, basically open the door to other potentially uses that, you know, could, could be something that would be dangerous to the township.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments, questions? Caitlin, anything?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. What are you making a motion for?
Approve it, and.
Should we close the public hearing?
Close the meeting.
Close the public hearing at 7:24.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, so next on our agenda, we have another public hearing. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the nonprofit organization, Romeo Rabbit Rescue. Can you second that? DJ? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Also, I need to show that we did publish it and the list of the people that were notified. Do you, in that motion, do you want to just add the, the parcel number and all of that?
For Romeo Rabbit Rescue?
For Romeo Rabbit. Is, should that, that should be in there?
You don't have to.
Can we read it off or you know it's going to?
No, you, you already identified the applicant as that, the Rabbit Rescue, Romeo Rabbit Rescue, and that's fine.
Okay, so there we go. So do we have a representative here for the Rabbit Rescue? Do you want to come up and to the podium, please? Hi.
Hi.
You want to state your name and your address, please, and?
Okay, I'm Erin Silas. It's 21850 McFall. I own the Rabbit Rescue. I do have my board here with me, they're in the back. Diane, Jessica, and Kelly. And I just present now?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for this opportunity. I apologize in advance if I fumble over any words or anything. My two youngest children chose last night to be a night that they pull all-nighters. So I did too. So I am pretty tired, but if I fumble, just ask me for clarification. I started rescuing bunnies four years ago. We rescue domestic rabbits. We don't rescue wildlife. We're not wildlife rehabilitators, we're not licensed for that. But we still get one to three calls a day for wildlife this time of year. And we have to refer them to wildlife rehabilitators. I didn't know a whole lot about rabbits most of my life, actually, until I started rescuing them. And the experience that I've had getting to know rabbits as house pets has been so remarkable and so profound that it's really changed me a lot and given me purpose in life. We have rescued almost 400 rabbits in four years since we've opened. We take in strays, and there are a lot of strays because unfortunately, domestic rabbits get dumped quite often. People confuse them for wild rabbits and think if wild rabbits can live outside, so can domestic rabbits. But they actually don't have survival instincts. They don't have sweat glands to cool off. They're not able to live outside, and they are prey animals. So usually rabbits that are dumped outside suffer a pretty horrible fate. So we get contacted on a regular basis for someone who spotted a stray. And we do have a search and rescue team that will go out and capture the rabbit in a live trap or by other means, whatever safe means necessary. And I would say that stray rabbits make up the majority of the rabbits we do take in. But we also work with animal control and, and try to accommodate them whenever they run into a situation, which commonly is like somebody moved out but left their rabbit behind in a cage. And so then animal control has to take the rabbit. Or hoarding cases, or cases of animal abuse and neglect. We always try to work with animal control. So I would say the second area or category of rabbits that we take in would be those that come from animal control. I had a request today from an officer, my contact at Macomb County Animal Control, for us to take in a three-month-old baby who was just tossed outside. So we are going to be rescuing that bunny tomorrow. One thing I want to make everybody aware of, though, is that as much as I love rabbits and as remarkable as I think they are, we are about more than just rabbits, a lot more than just rabbits. Yes, we, we love them, we want to rescue them, we want to give them a new chance at life to be a house pet, to live happily ever after. But we're also about people. And, and we care about our community members, and we care about the impact that we make on our community. We want to make sure it's a positive impact and not a negative impact. We do a lot of work in the community, such as nursing home visits. We've gone to a variety of different nursing homes, senior centers, adult daycares. In fact, Wellbridge of Romeo, we do monthly visits. And then after several months, we, we step back to bi-monthly visits. But we take about six to eight rabbits into the nursing home, and we do tabletop visits. We lay blankets on tables, and the seniors gather around. Um, we lay blankets on tables and the seniors gather around the tables and they have the opportunity to pet the rabbits. Um, I have never seen, I think, anything more remarkable than the look on these senior citizens' faces. Um, there's something so therapeutic about rabbits. They're a peaceful animal, they're a quiet animal. Um, but they're a very loving animal. And a lot of people don't realize that they bond to their humans as deeply as dogs do. Um, and they let her train like cats, so they do actually make a great house pet. Um, but I think the most profound experience I had in a nursing home, um, and I've had many, but one stands out was an elderly man. It was actually an adult daycare. And his wife had brought him in to drop him off so she could run some errands, um, and, and get some stuff done. And this man had not spoken in five years. He was nonverbal. And he did not make expressions, um, and he was very stiff. And so I had put, um, two rabbits on the table, a bonded pair of lion heads named Chicken Nugget and Nadia. And I asked, you know, if he wanted to pet them and he kinda leaned forward and he, and his wife had told me, she just got done telling me that he hadn't spoken in five years. Um, he leaned forward and he was putting his hand on them. I had to help assist him with the pets. Then I asked, hi- his face lit up, and I do have a video of this and I do share it, um, on our social media. Um, his face completely lit up and that brought his wife to tears because she hadn't seen that. And then I asked the man if he wanted me to help him hold the bunny and he said yes. And that was his first word spoken in five years. So, um, there, there's so much more to what we do than just rescue rabbits. We like to bring hope and peace and love and companionship and joy out into the community. We do over a hundred dynamic assemblies. We are part of the dynamic assembly group. And, um, they send us to well over a hundred different schools, daycares, um, summer camps. Um, most of them during the summertime, but some year-round, um, to take bunnies and visit the kids. And we do an educational, um, depending on the age group of the kids, we tailor it. We do an educational, um, talk on how to take care of domestic rabbits, the difference between domestic rabbits and wild rabbits. Um, and then we let the kids visit the bunnies. And that is always a huge hit. The kids just love it. Um, in addition to, to that, we've gone to, um, we've done fairs and festivals. We do bunny visits for donations. Um, we, let me just check my notes here real quick. Um, we've done birthday parties. Um, when people have had us come and bring some rabbits for a kid's birthday party, a bunny-themed birthday party. Uh, we also, uh, offer volunteer opportunities. Um, we offer volunteer opportunities to anyone, um, but especially like the youth. High school students and the honor society will come and, and volunteer with us. Um, I work with the volunteer coordinator at Romeo High School and I would love to at Armita High School as well. Um, and she coordinates with the students and sends their student volunteers to help at various events. And it's really great when they come and help at the senior visits because then we have the youth and the, the senior citizens and they're kind of brought together through this, um, really joyful experience with these very loving animals. We have also, um, worked on some disaster relief. We have taken in rabbits, um, that have survived hurricanes, um, from Florida. We've taken in, um, rabbits that have been like mass dumped. So when I say mass dumped, I mean somebody just released forty rabbits and that's creating a disaster um, in, in the neighborhood that they're released in. But we don't take them all on ourself because there's no possible way we could have the capacity to take in forty. We struggle just to be able to take in one at a time because the need is so great. Um, we and other rabbit rescues are often full. So what we have to do in that case is we have to put out, uh, like an SOS for emergency fosters. We network with other rescues in Michigan. And between all of us, um, working with animal control and our social media networks to bring in fosters, we have been able to place as many as twenty, thirty, forty rabbits from one, um, emergency event. And, um, the last situation, and there's many situations, I'm just trying to touch on the biggest ones, um, that we get a lot of our rabbits from are what we call bunny explosions. Bunny explosion is a, a term that I use just to describe that rabbits, well, they multiply like rabbits. And so people often, it's the most tell, you know, common story I hear all the time. I got two bunnies from a breeder. I thought they were both boys or I thought they were both girls. A month later, boom, um, there's a litter. And they think they can handle it themselves, so they don't usually call for help with that first litter. But, uh, and they figure out who the boy is and they separate the boy from the girl. But what they don't know is that that mama bunny gets pregnant the moment she gives birth. And so by the time they've separated that boy, that daddy, mom's already pregnant again. And so when that mom gives birth a second time, they're floored. Now, they think they can handle that. We get to about eight weeks old and those little boys can impregnate their mamas. And they don't take them away from their, you know, so really, this gets out of control very fast. Um, the largest bunny explosion case we've worked on, and we've worked on many, is had eighty-eight rabbits in one Livonia home. And it took, uh, the three of us rescues, six months to move all of those rabbits out of that home and get them placed into homes. So yes, we do keep rabbits onsite. We do shelter rabbits, um, and care for them onsite. But we also work with fosters because we don't have the capacity necessarily to, um, house all of the rabbits that we rescue. Um, we are one hundred percent volunteer-owned and operated. Um, none of us take a pay, myself included. In fact, I've put an enormous amount of money into the rescue. Um, we don't do it for money. We do it for the reward. We do it to make a difference. And, um, and we therefore rely on donations from the community to do everything that we do. We also, um, there's adoption fees and there's surrender fees that help offset some of the costs. And we would like to be able to, uh, for boarding. We have always offered boarding, but we've offered it in the homes of the board members, et cetera. Um, but part of this, uh, site plan includes a dedicated building for, um, boarding. It's be the bunny boarding house. And that building would be just solely to board rabbits and that would be also another line of income just to help us, um, take care of the bunnies, have the money we need to take care of the bunnies. So we don't have to dip into our pockets all the time. Um, there are, the last thing I think I wanna share, uh, is that we're a small, quiet, peaceful operation. We're a rabbit rescue. Rabbits don't make any noise. Um, they're, they produce a lot of poop, but it doesn't have an odor. Um, and it actually makes the best fertilizer. And one thing, we do sell rabbit fertilizer, um, manure. Rabbit manure makes the best fertilizer for gardens and there's a lot of farming going on here in Armita. So we hope to be able to, um, kinda sell fertilizer again as a means of raising money. Um, the manure ta- uh, uh, sorry. The manure has about four times the nitrogen as like cow or horse manure, so it's amazing for your plants. I've always gardened and I do plan on gardening, um, on a larger scale on the ten acres that we have. And we do, um, wish to sell some of the products that come from the land, um, to, you, some of it will just be food for humans, like a farmer's market, vegetables. Um, again, to raise funds for the rescue. But also some, some of the items that we sell would be used as, um, food or toys or enrichment for the bunnies. For example, apple sticks from an apple tree. It's something that people buy all the time for the rabbits and we have apple trees on the property and we would like to cut up apple sticks and offer them. Um, our neighbors would never know we had bunnies on the property if I didn't tell them because we house them one hundred percent indoors. We do support rabbits as indoor house pets. Um, we don't keep them outside. We don't keep them in cages. We build, um, larger bunny rooms for them so that they can have enough space to hop around and zoomie and binky and be active, um, because it's better for their health. And, um, we will keep our, our land well landscaped. Um, we'll have privacy trees between our rescue and, um, our neighbor's property. And we will not, we, we do participate in a lot of events, but we don't hold them onsite. Um, we get, uh, we rent a venue when we have like a large fundraising event. And that's, that's about it. Just wanna say we're small, quiet, peaceful. Um, and we try to, you know, be as active in the community as we can so that we can, um, through animal companionship, bring some joy and enrichment to the lives of human beings as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Caitlin.
Um, so this application, it is a, um, special land use public hearing. Um, we are also able to take action on the site plan if we're, uh, comfortable doing that, um, as well. I was gonna stick more to the special land use component since that is what the public hearing is about. Um, so as mentioned, um, this property is considered agricultural. We do not have an animal rescue use. Um, and so the most equivalent would be the raising of fair bearing, um, fur-bearing animals. Now, that title, um, and the regulation within it is more consistent with dog kennels. Um, and so, um, during the analysis, during our board discussions, I'll walk us through some discretion that we can, um, apply there, um, where we deem it appropriate. Um, ultimately, with this special land use, um, it is important that we meet our special land use standards um, that are part of it to make sure that we're one through eight, um, in which I'll talk more in depth at our board discussion, but being harmonious with the neighbors, minimizing impacts and things of that nature. Um, and so if you look at the site plan, they are proposing, um, the main two structures. They already have an existing driveway that's being put in. They're proposing that to be, um, have their parking in front of those buildings. Um, and most the enclosure, oh, all the activity would be within those enclosures. Um, speaking to some of the components where they mentioned some retail components, because it is onsite, that's gonna be considered a roadside stand. That's why you don't really see that noted here. Um, it does not require special land use to do that use. It's a permitted use in the Ag District. And so that's why it's not very embellished in that analysis.
Thank you. Up next then, if we're all good with that, we're going to have the comments from the public. I do have one letter. Um, it's from Mr. DePa. It says, "This email will voice our opposition to the Romeo Rabbit Rescue, which would join our farm. We feel that it will lower our property value. Please express our view at the meeting on Wednesday, June fourth." And that's signed John DePa, Renee DePa, and Gab- Gabrielle Kidn- Kidney.
So that is an adjacent neighbor?
That's what he said, yes. Yep. And now's the time, if there's anybody from the public that has a comment, please step up to the podium and sign and put your address. Was I supposed to put my name in?
No, you don't.
We have, because you, we have your stuff because you're the applicant. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for taking this time today. Um, my name is Tracy Jones. My cha- my husband Chad, myself, and two of my adult children live to the west of the property. Actually, the majority of our property line actually conjoins with theirs. It runs consecutive.
Your address, please.
Two one seven seven zero McFall Road.
Thank you.
I am here today to show my unified support for my family of four for the cause that gets the neighbor the approval to change the ordinance so that they can run their rescue on their property. Our property borders the majority of the west side of their property line. While researching as well as talking to mu- many members of the family that I have who own thousands and thousands of acres, they have assured me that things like this do not cause any devalue of your property. Especially, it's a rabbit rescue of all things. So the main concerns that I would have if it was me, is it gonna affect my water supply? It will not. Is it gonna affect my noise pollution? They're rabbits. They're not going to be outside the building. Is it going to affect an increase in traffic? Well, anybody who lives on McFall Road, as I love our farmers, during harvest time, there is a lot of traffic. However, I just don't see that a rabbit rescue is going to bring that much traffic or even an eighth of that. Um, we will have more traffic from the farmers and I do understand that they need that because I love our farmers and I wouldn't have it any other way. As far as the barn that they plan to put on the property, I don't see why any of our neighbors should really oppose that as the majority of the neighbors on McFall have a barn. As long as they follow city approval and permits are pulled, as I just don't really feel a neighbor should have a say. As far as the rabbit rescue and adoptions are concerned, I have been assured by Erin that they would never take in more rabbits than they could humanely handle. I would assume that the rescue would want to encourage adoption so that these animals can find a loving home that they deserve. I feel like you shouldn't have a rescue if you can't adopt out. It's like having one side of a coin without using the other. I see no problem with that. I personally have acreage and many neighbors have farmed animals as well. Rabbits are quiet and gentle animals and I'm sure we probably have more wild rabbits on my property than Erin will have in her barns. I am not sure if any of you are aware, but they do also pay to have them spayed and neutered to reduce the animal population because rabbits breed like rabbits. As far as boarding rabbits, if they have room to care for someone's rabbit when they are out of town, I don't see a problem with that. Most of us on McFall have animals and when we go out of town or on vacation, the majority of us will either be looking for someplace to house our animals when we are out of town or have somebody come over and take care of them. They are trying to fill a specialized need with the rabbits. To be honest, when we had rabbits, I never even thought about that. Uh, I was lucky enough to have family that could come and take care of mine. As far as charging money for the carrying of someone's animal, I see that as a plus only for their facilities so that they can offset some of those costs. We did move out here in two thousand eight to get away from the city mindset type and homeowners associations and all that, good stuff that comes with living in the city. Um, most people know, I know out here, come out here to escape all that and to live in the serene environment. I don't think the rabbit rescue is really going to change any of that, for me at least. Um, I encourage anybody who has any unsure ideas about what Erin and Robyn Silas are going to do, to talk with them. They are wonderful people and you'll see through that they are genuine in their heart and concern for these rabbits and I feel that they're gonna do a fine job.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Lynn Vidigiri. I live at, um, two one seven nine zero McFall. And, um, our property is very small and we are adjacent to this property. I have no opposition to rabbits. Um, they are quiet. I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with retail. And I don't have my ans- my, my questions answered. I want to know about signing. I want to know about lighting. I want to know about volume of the traffic. Um, I haven't seen much except maybe what was posted in I Heart Armita. Um, it was fairly vague, but, um, we need ten, twelve spots. We need a party room. I'm not quite sure what that all entails. If you're doing most of your, uh, she, what did she call it? Most of her dynamic assemblies off-site, then take them off-site. That's fine. Um, people have their own horses. They have their own chickens, you know, um, and we do support the farm life. We moved up here because it's a quiet neighborhood. We like to look at the stars. I don't want any nighttime lighting out in that area if it's okay. Um, certainly time, maybe time-limited lighting if it has. And I certainly don't wanna sign on the road announcing that they're open to the public and these are the hours that you can drop in. Um, I didn't sign up to live next to Blake's and certainly this is nowhere near the level of Blake's, I get it. But, um, these are my concerns, living right next to it. I mean, this barn is going to be about three hundred feet away from my house. And, um, I do have some concerns there. Um, rabbits, fine. I think it's great. It's a loving thing. It's humane, but, um, let's limit. And I don't know why we need a special yep, land use for this. You could have, uh, rabbits in your backyard. You can have chickens in your backyard. You don't need to change the land use of your home. And this is a residential area as well as a farming area. And it's very important that you keep our, our interests at heart as well. Okay?
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
My name's-
My name's Dave Zeeman. I live at two one eight four one McFaul, across the road from this proposed rabbit rescue. Background, my family's been in this township for over a hundred years. We have construction background, farm background. We built the garage that sits behind this township hall. Did several projects in town, all over the place. So, looking at the print, so they're going to have another septic field. Are they gonna have a well, separate well for this building? I don't know. They brought a building in, prefabricated. And with my experience, it should've had a rat wall because anytime you put feed, animals, things inside of a building that rats or groundhogs, coyotes, whatever wanna get into, they're gonna get into. So that's mine. Another issue, disease. They said in their post that they take animals from all over, whatever background they have. I see laboratory animals could be used, could be rescued. Where do they come from? Do they have a vet checking these animals as they bring them in? Are they susceptible to quarantine? When we had farm, you bring an animal in, you quarantine it. You do not mix it with the rest of the animals. So, other than that, that's probably about, and traffic issues, both neighbors have the same traffic issues. They say they're gonna bring, in their initial post, as many as fifty rabbits a day. And then they walk it back, a few weeks later, say, "Oh, no, no, we're not gonna have that many." And what I say is, what their initial post was what they're shooting for. The post I read today, their site, says they want thousands of rabbits to be rescued. They're starting here in Armada. They're bringing them in here, and that's what they're doing. So that's about all I got to say.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? There we go.
Hello. I'm Cassandra Grillo. I live at two one nine two zero McFaul. I am right next door. I actually talked to Erin or to one of the other ladies at the rescue prior to them moving in, about a week prior. I have rabbits. I have a male and a female, and guess what? They had babies. I did not know Erin. I did not know the rescue was moving next door. I did not know my rabbits were going to have babies. I was inquiring about a vet to get them fixed. Who can I go to? Because I was on a waiting list with Macomb County Animal Hospital that wanted to charge me eight hundred dollars to get my male rabbit neutered. Eight hundred dollars for a rabbit to be fixed. I had no idea what to do. And every month you have to call to get put on a waitlist over and over and over again. So while I was waiting is when Binky got pregnant. Since, due to meeting Erin and having the knowledge of the rescue, the dad has been fixed. There's no extra explosions. And we, we have bunnies right next door. So when she, and then my husband and my son met her before we knew she moved next door, walking around Home Depot with a rabbit. So as an animal lover, I am one hundred percent for it. I've also, I'm also a Macaw mom. I have animals on my property. I have ten acres right next door. And I have rescued a Macaw from, rescuing the other side of the state in Michigan. And there is no traffic. You can set up appointment times for people to come in. There's so many ways to work with a rescue. They don't want public coming in. Rabbits are scared. They're prey animals. She's not gonna want a million people at her house at once because the rabbits might have heart attacks. They might die. So she's gonna take her time. She's gonna investigate the homes. She's gonna do her due diligence to make sure that these animals get the proper placement. I'm learning more and more about rabbits, being that I'm new to having them too. It started with my nineteen year old. He's the one that brought one of the bunnies home. I'm a special ed teacher in Rochester. So we are turning two of the rabbits into therapy animals as well. And they go back and forth to Musson Elementary, and everybody at Musson Elementary knows the rabbits. And so far, they have been used especially a lot this month to calm down all of the kids that are autistic in my building. So I am one hundred percent for it. I ran over her house so fast, she probably thought I was crazy. But I was very excited that they were next door, literally next door. So, and my daughter is also in Armada High School. She's one of the National Honor Society students from Armada that has already helped at her house for hours. So, no problems here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other public comments?
Oh, one more thing. Their yard looks frickin' amazing. I'm a little jealous, Erin, just so you know. The fountains. They're fixing it up. It looks so nice. So, sorry. Had to add that part, too.
I'm not a resident of McFaul Road, but my mother resides at, I'm Marcia Hollands, two zero one two zero Armada Ridge Road. My mother resides at Well Bridge of Romeo. And about a year ago, they started bringing in the rabbits. And the residents would come in, and it's unbelievable how calming the rabbits are to the residents at Well Bridge of Romeo. And my mother is ninety-six. She suffers with dementia. And she is sort of, she's looking off and not really involved. But the people, the volunteers who come, they don't give up. They sort of take her hand and she'll pet it. They're very comforting animals to the residents. And I'm just so grateful that, I didn't know that this person lived in Armada, so I'm just very happy that they provide this service to the residents there. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Are there any other public comments? No? Commissioners?
I have one more. Hi, Auntie.
Sure.
When it comes to taking in fifty animals a day, that doesn't mean that...
It would be in quarantine. And any animal will be in quarantine. And I know with her that they would be. So we don't need to worry about disease because we don't want that to spread. So the fifty animals a day, she might be taking them, and it doesn't mean fifty people are gonna be at the house. She might go somewhere to pick up fifty rabbits from one case. I just wanna make that known because I know that was stated too. That's not what that means.
Okay. Thank you. Now, any other public comments? Okay. Commissioners, any comments? Questions?
Question. This, this is currently your residence? You live, you live there and plant the house here? And you're just, right now, you're just housing all the rabbits in the house?
No. Our, yes, it is our residence. Our rabbits are housed in KPEC. We don't, our rabbits are housed in KPEC. We don't have any of our rescue rabbits on the property right now. We only have our own personal pet rabbits in our home. We've been leasing for the last four years. We've been leasing various spaces. Seems like every year we have to move for one reason or another. And that's one reason we wanna get on our own property. We've been trying for a couple of years to get land in the country where we can have the rescue and operate on the property. We had this time last year about a hundred and fifty rabbits spread out throughout foster homes and in our main rescue location, with no more than seventy being in the main rescue location, which took up about forty-five pens because we have like two per pen in some cases, one or two. But all of our rescue rabbits are in KPEC. And if we get granted the special land use permit, then we will move them over onto the property. None of them have been moved yet. Do I have an opportunity to respond to some of the confusion or the concerns to clarify? Because...
That's later, during board discussion.
During board discussion? Then I guess you can come back up. We'll have you come back up.
Okay.
Okay?
Shall I sit down or do you have more questions for me? Okay.
Unless there's, does anybody have any more questions for her?
Yeah, I actually do. That's one of the things, the scale of your operation, is what you're going in is like, is this gonna be like phase one and you plan on growing and expanding from there? Or is this your, your site plan kinda where you wanna be as far as the size of your retail? I guess there's gonna be kind of a retail space and your boarding area and your adoption center?
What's included in the site plan is the full extent of what we want to do.
Okay.
Any more would be overwhelming.
Because I was reading some of your other stuff, and it seemed like at one point you were going commercial and there was gonna be a cafe and a retail spot. And you know, you were, you know, it was pretty grandiose plans that you had, it looked like. And I don't know if you were planning on implementing that stuff on this property also.
I don't think a cafe would be permitted on the property, and I wouldn't want it on the property because it's our private property.
Okay.
We also don't have open business hours. It is by appointment only. So we're not open to the public, so just come whenever they want. If they wanna come, they have to make an appointment with us.
Commissioners, any other questions? I noticed on the site plan, you have the bunny shop and farmer market. It's a small area in the, in the barn for maybe retail sales?
Correct. It's sketched in the front of the building that is not yet constructed.
Yes. Okay. It's in the site plan. Okay. It's not a cafe. Just wanna verify that.
No, no cafe.
It'd be a health code issue. I hope there are no other comments or questions further from the commissioners. A motion would be in order to close the public hearing at eight oh two?
That's fine. I will. I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, proposed. Motion carried to close the public hearing. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have report to correspondence. Looks like we have an update on Trillium Farms, their electrical permit. Final inspection scheduled for twenty-nine. Says project completed then. So, I'm sorry.
I think they're all done with their, the permit side of it for their building.
For their buildings?
For Trillium?
For Trillium. Have they, have they turned in their proof of being a bona fide farm? Do you know?
I'll ask Katie.
Okay. Okay. DJ, you have something?
Well, just had a zoning, ZBA meeting before this meeting.
Oh, okay.
We approved the minutes for the Semco site, just to make everything efficient. We had our elections.
Okay. Thank you. If there's nothing else, a motion would be in order to receive and follow reports and correspondence as presented? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Just a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
You guys, we're all in favor.
Aye, aye, aye. Aye, aye, aye. Motion is carried. We have no unfinished business. Now we go back to new business, and we have Frontier Farms Market rezoning. Caitlin?
Yep. So at this point, I'll go through the standards that we have regarding the rezoning. So as a reminder, when we rezone a property, it lives with that property. This is something that may be helpful to, in your packet after you go through the standards, the maps that were provided. So again, the subject property and surrounding properties are all zoned R1. If you look to our future land use map, which is our twenty-year projection of what our community may look like, property directly to the south is that flexible development, which is why we flagged it in my earlier comments. The property actually on thirty-two mile is zoned commercial. So again, that's, that's why those were all three brought in because that's that commercial note at Romeo Plank and thirty-two that is currently envisioned in our master plan. So standard one, or standard A specifically in our zoning ordinance, talks about being consistent with our master plan and vision. And so this specific note I just mentioned, that is intended to be upzoned or more intensity. The neighboring property is that flexible development, which is consistent with allowing a B1 zoning classification as it is a transitional district from commercial to residential. B is talking about that there is compatibility between the site as far as physical, environmental, and things of that nature. There aren't any significant natural features located specifically onsite. There is some agricultural nearby. And this specific use they're proposing, as we classified it, would be allowed in that zoning district for B1. C, that the evidence that the applicant cannot otherwise reasonably use their property as otherwise developed. So R1 again doesn't allow for the retail components, home-based businesses, and different things of that nature would be inappropriate to do the use that they're talking about there. As was previously mentioned during our public hearing comments, one of the buildings, due to, again, proximity to that building and that new created lot line, it would not meet the minimum side requirement, creating a non-conforming building. So the lot is meeting all of our requirements. If we approve the zoning, the lot would be approved because it is just creating a non-conforming building. Non-conforming buildings are essentially buildings in place, essentially that we would treat them as, if there's an expansion, they could not move closer to that side yard setback to be close to that property line they violate. And so there are different restrictions associated that we do address in the zoning ordinance. They are not proposing that at this point in time to do any additions to that property. But if there were to be any additions, that would be something, we already have the tools to handle how we would treat a non-conforming building. D is that, is it compatible with the potential uses subject to that property for land suitability, environmental density, traffic, things of that nature? Again, you have neighboring properties that are potentially gonna be commercialized. You have some residential. B1 is a zoning district that allows for retail businesses, professional offices, beauty shops, nursery schools, workshops, showrooms, low-intensity uses, intended to be appropriate when it's adjacent to residential. E is talking about capacity of water and sewer. So there is that capability already onsite used for that building. As part of their permitting process, they would be required to make sure that they are in compliance with county standards. We are not the county, and so we were gonna, we'll defer to them on their expertise on what is sufficient. That is something that would be reviewed. F is talking about the capacity of the road system. So Romeo Plank Road is a paved road, and so we deem it would be appropriate to handle that traffic. If anything, the county road commission does have the authority to require additional reviews for safety and purposes of that nature. G is talking about the demand of the types of uses regarding this rezoning, that the current rezoning would otherwise be demand. And again, so R1 doesn't allow for this use that is currently being requested. H is talking about the boundaries of the proposed rezoned district. It meets the requirements. So again, it meets all of the lot requirements. It does not meet the non-conforming building requirements.
Yeah.
And so that is something the assessor would approve as part of their assessing rules and bounds. We do have a way to address non-conforming buildings in our zoning ordinance long-term as the applicant would live with that situation. I is talking about the requested rezoning is the most appropriate, and so B1 is the least intense. It is consistent with our master plan, what we consider appropriate transitional zoning districts. And so that would be more or less fulfilling that. J is talking about the rezoning, land use would not be more appropriate as something else in the different districts. We have already mentioned, would industrial be more appropriate or not? In which, again, based on the nature of this use, the B1 would... In which, again, based on the nature of this use, the B1 would deem to be appropriate as they're asking. K is talking about it not being a isolated or unplanned spot zone. Again, there is adjacent neighboring, um, flexible zoning and commercial areas, so it is not completely displaced, um, and cons- inconsistent with our master plan. L is, this application has not been submitted in a year, and if it's not. M is talking about if this is conditional zoning, which it is not, and then is any other factors the planning commission deems necessary? So if that, um, if there's any other questions, we can call on our applicant or myself and help you through it.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
I do have, I, I'm kinda concerned. So we split this parcel off, that makes it sellable. So if, if they sell that to somebody else, I'm feeling, I'm afraid that this parcel won't be large enough for a driveway and for parking spaces. I, I don't, I mean, I could be way off. I don't know, but that's, that's a concern of mine.
Well, it meets the minimum commercial requirements. So the lot size, lot width, it meets all of those. And so, um, again, that's a use-by-use case scenario, and so, um, with building changes and use changes, we do check that compliance. And so if, for whatever reason, if it were to be converted fully to office, and we'd say, well, there isn't any room for that before they occupy the building, we're gonna verify parking compliance. If not, that may trigger a site plan review. So as, with this rezoning, every use is reviewed from the township when they change that occupancy.
It would be a new site plan.
Yep, um, the only thing would be is if the use doesn't change, we do not require compliance at that point. So if it went from My Muffins or whatever to My Cakes, um, that isn't something the township would be involved in. If we're talking about different retail to, again, an office space or a hair salon, that would require township review, and we would review all of those components.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This, this property doesn't have sewer hookup, right?
Uh, not to public sewer.
Okay, so it's, it would have to have its own septic field if it got split off?
Correct, and I'm scrolling to the plot plan right now to see if that's on there. I thought it was.
Yeah. You wanna come up?
Yeah, there's, there, there's onsite septic.
On, on that split. It's part of that split or it's a part of?
None of this.
No, I think it's, is it part of the split? Oh, it is part of the split.
It's all together. Yeah, it's all together.
You mean, you mean like the, the larger barn and what you're splitting off, use the same septic or are there two separate septics?
Um, one, uh, they had special, uh, septic in there, but they had, uh, the main septic and then that one went into the other septic.
Is it an engineered field? Uh, engineered on-septic field?
Yeah.
Is it on, it's not on, yeah. Is it on that parcel that you rezoned?
And that, and that's part of the site plan review and county's part of that. So really, from a rezoning standpoint, that's not relevant. But that is something that they do have to be compliant with the county on that requirement.
Yeah, it's in, it's, it's part of the health department review, so we, they already have, uh, health department's already been in several times and have given approvals over the years, even prior to us owning it.
What did the appropriate time to address the, uh? Put the traffic at the site plan or at the rezoning phase? Right now, the rezoning that we're looking at tonight is a recommendation to the township board. That's the first step, and then they'll come back with the site plan.
Correct.
So what is the most appropriate time to, to address the traffic? If we going to ask for something from the road commission that, uh, from the Department of Roads, that, um, I mean, essentially, it looks like it's not really changing much from what it is now. But at what point is the appropriate time to ask for something from the Department of Roads?
Um, from our standpoint of the township, um, the county overall, um, their road commission, when there is a change in use, they have the ability to evaluate that driveway. So independently of the township's determination if this is sufficient or not, they have their own triggers. From our township standpoint, if we were fundamentally concerned with traffic, it would be relevant at the rezoning stage if we worried about any and all uses in B1. Because it's not tied to a specific use. If it's more the use in its operation, then it's more appropriate that site plan, special land use stage. As a permitted use, um, just the change in use does not trigger a full site plan review. So if they're not making any building changes, if they're not required to make parking lot changes, I haven't evaluated the full scope of what they're doing, but it may not require a site plan by the planning commission. If it's a permitted use, they're not physically changing anything on site, that doesn't require a review and approval.
Caitlin, I have, uh, issue back to C. On your, uh, punch list here, I mean, one concern I have is putting a, uh, a property into non-conform. You know, you're stating once it's approved into a B1, it'll be, if the building is erected, it's, it's non-conforming to the site, right?
The building would be.
I'll deal with it at the site and we'll wait till.
Okay.
We'll go through it then. Alright, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments? No?
It looks like all of the, um, criteria, all the standards are, been reasonably met. So, in that, I mean, in that case, I'm, I'm assuming that, uh, you know, it'd be a recommendation.
I can't hear you.
It's H.
On H. As previously stated, the north side of the area proposed to be rezoned does not meet the B1 district side yard requirement.
Right.
Is that the non-conforming building?
That's the non-conforming building.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yep, so it meets all of our lot requirements. The assessor would approve it.
The width and the size.
It's hardly that.
It's just making a non-conforming building.
In, in the future, if they wanted to expand that building, would they be able to come back and, and take in more of the property, rezon- rezon it, and then it would no longer be non-conforming? Once you make the split, it's pretty much a non-conforming.
So you always have the right to make a boundary line adjustment is the technical term for it. Um, and so
That's what it's.
The, the biggest thing is, is there's not a whole lot of difference between that building and this building. So an adjustment isn't necessarily going to help you there. Um, the biggest limitation to this property owner pending our, changes to our non-conforming building section is they wouldn't be able to put those buildings any closer than they currently are. Um, and so.
And that's why I don't wanna create an issue for them. You know, it, it, I don't know if it, well.
I, so, when it comes to, when it comes to like a non-conforming building, you know, what it is, is essentially, it's just like if you were to grant a variance for, say, a residential and you're like, hey, I got ten foot and it's gonna be seven foot. You know, when we do this, we, we split it down the manner, like, right down the middle to keep it so that it was as, as, we could expand as far as we could, but make it as, as equitable for both, both of, of the lot split. Understanding was, it would create that non-conforming building. We just can't, unfortunately, we can't move the building. So the building exists, but what would happen is, if we ever expanded, we could expand backwards, forwards, but we can never expand that direction.
You can go, you can expand it, but you'd have to acquire your property.
We had to get a variance. We would have to get a variance.
Or acquire more property.
Cuz there's already, there's already a building to the north.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, so.
So that's why we put the property line where it is.
They just can expand closer.
So they're, they're not gonna, so they're not gonna go any closer to the existing building.
Oh, they can't go closer. Yeah, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon.
That's okay. So that's, that would be the thing, is that we
Yes, sir.
We, we tried to set it as, as best as we could with the two buildings that we currently have existing.
Very good. Why is it that you didn't wanna rezone the big building?
Because we're not using that for that, that use. Currently, the big building is just, it's just a, it's literally the farmer's market piece. So it's just the, it's just the farm. It's just the stuff that we sell there. And that's what it was before too. So when we bought it, we bought it as that use. In fact, when we bought it, we didn't realize that the bakery thing was, that was even an issue.
Sure.
And then we found out it was an issue. We quickly came in here, we spoke, um, I spoke with Michelle, I spoke with, um, Chris, trying to work through, how do we do, how do we do things the right way, and that's over here.
Well, that's why I didn't wanna create an issue if we were looking down the line, cuz one affects the other.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got it.
My comment is, the fact that it is small as it is, it does, um, take care of a lot of issues where we won't get into some of the, you know, office buildings or, even though B1 is our lowest, uh, intense use of commercial uses, you're not gonna get a mega church or, you know, you're not gonna get a large scale on that small of a parcel. And, you know, I think the intention is to keep this in the type of use that it already is, and they're just trying to make the, um, have the ability to, um, you know, do that accessory baking and, um, it seems like, as you say, the less intensive use. So, um, I don't see any issues other than any of that non-conformance. It's just a minor thing that's gonna affect them more than anything else, but.
Commissioners, anything else?
Light it up, Randy. I, I see, I mean, if we approve it, I see that there's gonna be some issues. Try to alleviate the problems here, but kinda caught between a rock and a hard spot. One thing is, is the parking. You use in residential property as your parking for commercial of business. I know we're not supposed to talk about that right now, but I think that is a main concern. You have to have, it doesn't show the septic field on there. I understand that that's all done through the health department and all that, but usually I, when we do a site plan, everything is all set. I mean, the parking, the buildings, the septic, the dumpster, all this kinda stuff. I know we're just going through a, a rezoning of the property, but it's just seems like there needs to be a little bit more on here to satisfy my need.
Okay. Don't have?
Okay, is there anything?
G, Maureen?
N- not for rezoning of the property. I feel like it's in the right direction towards the commercial building, uh, commercial property, so it's flexible.
So would anyone care to make, we have options for motions?
I believe we could postpone. We could deny, or we could approve.
Make a motion to postpone it.
Do you have a second to postpone?
I don't have a reason to do that.
No.
Randy, do you have a reason why you?
Everything that I just said.
If no one seconds, the motion fails.
I will second. We'll do a, a roll call.
Well, the, there's, so there's a first and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
If it gets postponed, is there, will there be more detail for the next discussion on this property? Or this is going to be the same information?
So that's what the request was. This is being proposed based on the applicant providing additional information regarding the, um, onsite utilities. And, um, parking, um, calculations. Is that accurate?
Right, I, I want it done as a regular site plan, where everything's gonna be, where the dumpster's gonna be.
So this is not appropriate for requiring a site plan with a rezoning? It is meant to have a concept plan. But as the planning commission, the motion is that they would like that level of information, and so that's the motion that's on the floor.
Is that, is that a, is that a reasonable request to deny the, uh, rezoning? Does that seem like it?
Not to deny it, postpone it.
Postponing it. Cuz the information that we're requesting isn't relevant to the rezoning, so that's why.
Correct, so the information should be related to the standards of our rezoning. And will that help us make an educated decision if it is appropriate or not?
Towards the goals of the master plan.
Correct.
So the business district, I feel the business rezoning that towards the commercial property, it's, it's right in the master plan. It's in the spirit of the master plan.
I agree.
To rezone that property no matter what they put there. So, it's not that, for, the site plan is separate issue.
We are making it non-conforming.
Just a boo.
Just, yeah.
It's, it's still non-conforming.
They still can, but they still can rezone it technically, so.
You're willing to do non-conforming? I guess that's what I need to know, if, if everybody is willing to have non-conforming.
To have a what?
Non-conforming.
Non-conforming building.
I mean.
That's, I mean, that's, I mean, that's one of the, you know?
We gotta deal with that at the site plan.
Because it would be right now for the rezoning. If we rezone it, makes it non-conforming. If we don't rezone, it stays the way it is.
The only option is to make the rezoning larger, and I don't think that is the intent to have the only.
That's the area, yeah.
Then we've got a big B1 parcel, so.
Let me see that map again.
So over here is the commercial.
Oh, sorry, you're looking at the little map. Yes, that's right on the little map. Yep.
So then we're going right next to the rest of Michael.
That's right.
We're making the business property right next to the commercial property, and the residential zone is on the other side. That makes sense to me.
Say that again, we're making the business and the commercial?
Well, this is, we're, we're zoning this business, right? And the commer- there's commercial over here.
No, there isn't.
There isn't?
Yeah, there is.
There is, that's the, I said. The gas station, but there's, there's a, there's parcels in between the gas station and what we're rezoning. There's a residential in between.
Correct.
The hashtag is in, to B1. There's a gas station right there.
Correct.
So there's one residential parcel, parcel in between that they currently lease up to the farmer that does the.
But that's, that's neither here nor there, correct?
Right, but their current use isn't.
Well, I think we're looking at it as an R1 parcel, that's, but it's not being used as an R1 parcel.
Right.
It's used like a B1, agribusiness, so that point is, is kinda moot that we're.
But that, a house could go in there. It, it, it is zoned R1 right now, so somebody could put a house there right now.
They could, and they'd be right up against the B2, B1 gas station.
They would, they would, but.
Right by a gas station.
And just.
That's eyes wide open.
Playing the devil's advocate here, you know?
Trying to look at all the, the different options.
Alright, we got a motion.
And if there's no more discussion, whenever you're ready to call that vote.
Any more discussion?
And we're voting on postponing, and at that time, we, there'd be potentially more information to.
So the applicant, the motion on the floor is to postpone pending additional information on the site plan. Again, regarding onsite utilities, parking, and all other site informational requirements?
Yep.
That is the motion.
If this motion doesn't work, then the motion, well, let's, let's do a, all in favor of postponing? No.
Say aye.
Aye.
Nope.
Nope.
I say aye for postponing.
Aye, I also say aye.
No.
Well, all those in favor say ayes, so two ayes. All those against?
Nay.
No.
Nays have it. Motion fails. We're ready for another motion.
Okay, so a motion, so the motion that we need is to, uh, recommend to the township board the rezoning of the parcel from R1 to B1 because it meets the standards of our, it meets our rezoning standards. Does that cover?
I can modify it in a moment. I would add the address.
Why not do it right the first time?
Alright, so it should include the.
I think your party can repeat that.
Alright, so it should include the, um.
Crafting a motion.
It, it should include the address, which is six nine four seven five Romeo Plank Road, and it meets all of the rezoning standards in section nineteen, zero six five.
Okay, so my motion is then to recommend to the township board the rezoning from B one, R one to B one for, um, this is the address.
Nineteen oh six five, nineteen oh six five.
Six nine four seven five Romeo Plank.
Romeo Plank, because it means all the rezoning standards is section nineteen of the ordinance.
Who's second that?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay, I don't feel that it had reached the agency.
Motion is carried. Thank you.
Can I add one thing?
That's up to the chair.
Sure.
I just, it was no, no comment about that, but, so I, I work at a lot of townships, and, uh, I just wanna let you know, I, just in terms of what Caitlin's been doing here, you don't see a lot, so, just, you guys have a great planner, just, I just.
Thank you.
Well, just well spoken, just, uh, lots of different townships, you go out there, especially townships like, like, that are more into the rural sense, and I just, it was professionalism was great, so, thank you.
Thank you, I think she'd be even better if she'd give us her recommendation.
You know, that's, that's the hard thing, that's what's hard, is it's really hard to give the exact, all the stuff without saying yes or no. Um, and, and I know it was, I, I spoke the same way, 'cause I called Michelle and I'm like, she didn't say yes or no, and, um, and, but now I can see why, so, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good luck to you.
I think they're gonna come back with a site plan, 'cause they're not changing the site.
To be determined. We'll check the parking.
Yeah, check the barn.
Okay.
And then the city, the county will check it.
Next on our agenda is the Romeo Rabbit Rescue Special Land Use. Now, are we doing the site plan, this is what was kinda confusing, if this is both.
Yes, so this is a special land use and site plan review, so the planning commission has the action, or has the authority to take action on our special land use, um, which would be a recommendation to the township board, you also can choose to take action on the site plan review, um, which is approved directly by the planning commission. Um, you can also choose to forward the special land use, but ask for a revised special, or site plan if you need additional information to verify, um, that component of this review, so either way, for this application, you're looking for two motions under this business item.
Okay, well, let's first address the special land use.
I have a question, though, on, on the agenda, it just says special land use, should it not have said?
Um, so every special land use requires some level of site plan, and so that it's not individually itemized is not a procedural issue.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, Caitlin.
Alright, um, so, um, in our review for the special land use, um, I'm gonna start with the cover letter, um, just talking about some of the, um, specific use requirements, it does play into some of the components of the site plan. Um, so again, this use, um, is determined to be the most equivalent, is raising of fur-bearing animals. Um, the current regulation is more tailored to actual dog kennels, um, and so within that subsection, um, some of the compliance issues, um, regarding A three, um, so we require a certain area for each animal, it's about a hundred square feet per animal. Um, and so what we did was, we looked at, um, the total gross area for both the, um, rescue more operation, as well as the commercial kenneling, um, operation in the smaller, um, proposed building, which is four thousand and fifty square feet, and so that would mean the maximum would be that forty rabbits, again, so, if you look at that floor plan, there is some different play areas, and that's for the bunnies, I'm presuming, to interact, or interact with their potential fosters or adoptions, um, but ultimately, these in, animals wouldn't be able to roam in different capacities within that area, and so that was my methodology on that. And so if they choose to have two rabbits in one enclosure, or one rabbit in one enclosure, I would not recommend the township go to the actual function, operational components of the operation, um, in that capacity, it's literally a density concern, um, for most standpoint. So, that would be something that, um, the applicant would have to revise, um, the number of rabbits that they're proposing, um, to meet that sizing or request of variance.
Can we just, can we address this as we go, 'cause, I mean, our ordinance, I know it was, it's geared towards larger animals, but, you know, if we look at GAMS, um, they've got a section on domestic animals, and what they recommend is, um, way smaller than what we, we require, obviously, it was, ours was geared more towards.
Correct.
Dogs and llamas and things like that, um, shouldn't we be following more of what's recommended by GAMS? Especially as we're rewriting the ordinance, which that's kind of on the table right now, but.
Correct, um, so for animal rescues, um, if we had that use, it would relate to a different formula. Um, the current provisions in their zoning ordinance, I'm not aware of that level of flexibility, um, specifically there.
I wonder how much flexibility we have, because, I mean, we don't have a rabbit ordinance, but.
Well, but it falls under the fur-bearing ordinance, and that's the ordinance that we need to follow, I'm.
Correct.
And if it, if it doesn't fit that ordinance, can we use some basic logic and, you know, general accepted practices to determine a little flexibility, or?
Oh, it's in the, go ahead, sorry.
This is our, this is our professional, professional answer.
Um.
It seems like there's, there should be a mo, some reasonable things that we can, you know, use here.
Because of the differences in GAMS and the, and the intent of the.
Right, but, but it, it's fur-bearing animals is the title, and it is a hundred square feet per animal. Um, so, a, a, again, that's something that the applicant could go for variance for, um, again, being, um, that reasonable component associated with it. Um, that's something that you could still move it forward to the township board, um, and say that you're willing to do an eighty rabbit maximum, if you wanted to change that, um, number, but I'm not aware of that discretion specifically, um, in that section of the zoning ordinance, um, because it isn't just the keeping of animals, um, if that was that case, then yes, the GAMS could potentially come through, 'cause you have the commercialization, which GAMS falls under.
Okay, but in the, if the applicant's aware that, um, we are working on the ordinance, and we might be reworking that section on animals, they could go for this approval, and then when the ordinance changed, would they just have to come back, and, I mean, if they wanted to increase the capacity, or would they automatically just be allowed that, if the ordinance did change?
Oh, so if the ordinance did change, um, yes, I would say that you could come back to the township and get that revised, at that point in time.
They could, they, it wouldn't be automatic, though, they wouldn't just automatically be allowed to go to whatever the, the.
Correct. Correct, because, and I wanna be careful on that, just because we have not talked about that as a group, and so I wanna make sure we talk about it as a group, what are the requirements, and everyone's agreed to it, and then, yes, that is something that we could do.
I just wanted to make the applicant aware that we are doing a total rewrite on the zoning ordinance, but.
Aaron? Go now, wait. I have a question for her.
Well, Caitlin's not done with this.
Oh, you weren't?
I'm not ready, I'm not through my presentation yet.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Well, I would, it goes to this section anyways, alright, go ahead.
So then number two, the other compliance component is that it requires all interior buildings, keeping animals are required to be soundproofed. Um, and so, one of the things that the planning commission does have the discretion to do, um, is that you can evaluate, I believe they're proposing standard building materials to soundproof the building, um, in which we could determine that is a sufficient method to soundproof the building when animals such as bunnies are being proposed in those buildings, so that's the discretion we do have. Lost my keys, favorite, oh. Um, the third component, um, is talking about all internal kennels and interiors have to have concrete floors or suitable cleaning materials, so, um, the applicant, um, has talked about some of the different housing floors being plywood or other exterior materials. The planning commission, I would say there is some level of discretion that you can talk about appropriate materials based on the animal that's there, um, so if you, their operations proposing different materials for the rabbits in certain capacities, that you can okay that, um, as opposed to saying concrete floors or nothing. For number four, um, the parking requirement for this specific use requires one parking space per five kennels. Um, so in that formula, if we have forty rabbit kennels, um, you're looking at eight total parking spaces that are proposed, the current site plan does show eight. Um, so, as part of that special land use.
So nu- number four, requiring one parking space for every five kennel runs, but we don't really have kennel runs on this site, do we?
Um, I guess based on the nature of, um, the terminology, um, you could determine that that is not the formula you would like to use, um, and so you could adjust that formula if you would, if that is what you're hinting at, because, correct, um, runs are not being proposed, 'cause those are exterior typically speaking, as opposed to interior.
So we have a little flex on four?
Correct, and so it's up to the, the group as a whole, um, if you would like to discuss one through four, and what level of, um, sufficiency you would like to clarify, and then I can go into the review standards, um, but.
Um, I would like to ask about the floors.
Okay.
The animals are gonna be housed in separate cages, or in, on the floor, or, I mean, that would be relevant to.
Um, so as part of the floor plan that was provided, um, they have the different dividers to it, um, and so that would be how they were separated from each other, um, as far as the other floor material, I would defer to the applicant.
Floor material is, you're saying plywood?
No, we would never put them on wood, because you can't sanitize it, so, we, so, um, I'm still looking into options, but vinyl plank floor is probably the way we'll go, um, because it's the most durable, and it's, you can sanitize it, and it's waterproof. But I was also looking into like an AquaTurf, but I don't know enough about it, and I'm playing phone tag with the lady right now to, to get more information on that. Um, I, my understanding is it's rubber, and I'm not sure how well it will clean, whatever we use, we have to be able to sanitize it, mop it, clean it, it has to be waterproof, so nothing goes below it and seeps into the, in the boarding house, there is currently wood, that may be where the, the current floor is plywood, that's how it came, but we will cover it with the flooring that we can clean. Vinyl plank, probably.
Whether it's plank or tile, it doesn't matter, long as it's impervious.
Correct.
Or, um, a polymer paint, whatever you use.
Your new building would have what type of floor, would that just have like a cement slab to start off?
To start with, yes.
Okay.
But we would of course cover it same.
Right, right, I just wanted to make sure, so the, the existing one is, has always been a wood floor?
There's two existing buildings, the pole barn that was on the property when we purchased it has a cement floor.
Okay.
And then the prefab shed that was delivered has a plywood floor currently.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That was a concerning building, without a rat wall.
Yep.
Right there, pretty fine line.
So, is this new building constructed on a, just a slab, it's a cement floor slab, is it a footing, a rat wall, or the new building that you want to, want to construct that?
So we plan to order a steel building kit.
Okay.
And erect it on a cement slab.
On a cement slab.
But we would finish the interior with drywall, vinyl planks, everything would be sealed and, and finished to the, just like this, except for not wood floor, um, insulated, absolutely, um, insulation should offer the, the noise, the soundproof, however, not to state the obvious, but rabbits don't make noise.
This is, the suggestion on a rat wall is, is a good one, because, you know, especially since they're prey animals, you could get a lot of burrowing and things underneath the slab, and then your slab kinda isn't much good after you get a lot of burrowing underneath, so, we wanna.
I can explore, I've never heard the term rat wall before, so it's something that I definitely will explore, I will say that, um, we've been at a pole barn in, um, KPEC for the past year, and it is a steel building on a cement slab, and we did not, we just have vinyl, because it's a temporary location, we just have vinyl rolls laid down, um, and we haven't had any rat issues.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments on what Caitlin has gone through so far?
I think there was a concern about lighting, and I don't see that addressed.
Um, so we're at the special land use section, um, so I was trying to stick, um, the special land use requirements in that, um, and then, yes, we will go to site plan review. Um, and so, um.
Should I address the capacity then, now?
Uh, yes.
Is the capacity gonna be an issue for you, for if, if it's restricted to, instead of fifty rabbits, forty?
So currently, we will, we will do what is required, is my answer, um, to stay in, um.
Compliance.
Compliance, absolutely, um, currently I have thirty-three pens in the rescue building that's yet to be constructed. Um, when that is constructed is gonna be depending on our fundraising campaign, and how soon we're able to raise the funds for that. In the, I wanted, the reason I wanna clarify this is because in the pole barn, there is twenty-eight, and actually, we're gonna go four or less, we're gonna go twenty-four, 'cause when we were in there remeasuring, um, we realized we needed a little more space in the front. So there would be twenty-four pens in there, now, that's a temporary housing, that would not be at the same time as the pens, and the, the new building would take the place.
That's the issue, well, that's for you to figure out, but, and, and we're ignorant to the fact that means nothing to us, how many, the pens can be multiple sizes, but I'm looking at capacity of how many, um. You know, so, that's what I guess I'm asking.
Right, so our capacity, as it's written right now, um, when I say thirty-three pens, we're really, we're gonna build permanent bunny rooms that are half walls, um, you could call them more like stalls, but.
So one rabbit to?
One to two, most rabbits are either singles or bonded pairs, on rare occasion, we might have a trio, but that's not common at all. So it'd be one to two rabbits per, uh, space, and the space, and this is where, you know, I do wanna explore, this is all new to me, so, try to bear with me, I've never done, um, special land use, right, I don't really, I'm winging it here, um, the, the main thing I wanna assure everybody is we'll be in compliance no matter what.
Okay.
Um, but, I, I may wanna explore the possibility of applying for a variance on the kennel space, because that is written for dogs. I mean, ra- rabbit rescues in general tend, and, and also, um, breeders and farms keep their rabbits in cages. We upstep that a notch, because we don't want the rabbits to be confined to such a small space, so we provide, um, a minimum of four foot by four foot, that's not a hundred feet per animal, that would be a four foot by, but this is for a small pet, this is for a rabbit, um, and so they do have different needs. And if you compare what we're doing, um, with what other rescues around the world are doing, we're offering much, much more space per rabbit, um, and that's one of the things that we have a good reputation for, um, is keeping our numbers low, uh, and giving them more space so that they can live a healthier life, um, while they're with us, and then we adopt them into homes as house pets, um, so we don't support rabbits in cages, but I, I would consider exploring the opportunity of applying for a variance on the. exploring the opportunity of applying for a variance on the kennel space so that it's, whatever is decided upon meets the needs of the bunnies that we rescue. Um, I, I think I started to say earlier that last year this time we had a hundred and fifty and then because I'm tired, I forgot where I was going with that, we now have about fifty rabbits in our whole program. Because we have worked very hard to bring our numbers down, because we haven't had a permanent location. And our intention is to keep our numbers down, um, not more than, if I had to throw a number out there, eighty, um, rabbits would be kind of like our maximum and that would be utilizing possibly forty pens. But what you see in the site plan written, um, the numbered squares.
Square.
Are a bunny room each. However, in the pole barn, we're not gonna build permanent rooms because we don't plan to house rabbits there after the main rescue center, the larger building is constructed. We just need to move our bunnies in KPEC somewhere ASAP because KPEC is not air conditioned and they're really gonna struggle in this heat. So our hope, our prayer is that we can, um, not postpone hopefully and hopefully not deny because our rabbits do need a place to go where they can live in more comfortable, um, temperatures.
Sure.
Um, that's sustaining for their life. So, we will not house rabbits in both of those buildings at the same time. So what is listed in the, that, that number thirty-three that you see in the rescue center is under forty. And that's, that's what we, that's what our plans allow for. And then I don't know if the, the bunny rooms in the boarding house have to fall within that forty because I do have twelve there. Those bunnies aren't ours and they don't live with us and they, we would never have them all full at once.
So we're not trying to regulate your four by four.
Oh, okay.
Because there's, there's more common areas your rabbits can be for their quality of life. And so that's why I took the gross floor area of those buildings.
Okay.
And so we're not, again, and if you choose your own personal policy because they're bonded, you can have two rabbits and one kennel. That's, that is an operational component, that is not a township concern.
Okay.
Um, and so we're just looking at the maximum animals to be anticipated onsite.
So I believe we're within that already, within that forty spaces.
Forty.
The way it is structured right now.
It's forty total onsite.
Forty rabbits.
Forty total spaces.
Yep, so that, that's, that's the clarification, I know it's, it's worded differently, um, um, but that's, that's the intention. Same thing with that, um, though the rescue may deal with a thousand individual bunnies, we only care that there are forty onsite at any one given time. Um, so the rescue may say, well, we've saved a thousand rabbits, wonderful, but how many are here? Um, and so that is, um, one of those number components.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Because I've heard, um, forty spaces and then I've heard, so it's not forty spaces?
Forty individual rabbits.
Forty, and so if there's a pair per space.
Rabbits.
Cause you, you have, you have other uniqueness to your site that we're, we're working with you on, um.
The variants, correct?
Not the variants, no, just interpretation of, you have some other common areas rabbits can be for their well-being. So it's part of that dog or unusable area where, again, you're fulfilling that.
Got it, thank you.
If, if she takes the, into account the pole barn, all this square footage is almost five thousand square feet. If I, unless I'm, if I'm reading these numbers right, so wouldn't she be allowed fifty rabbits?
Um, so there is a portion of it that's the retail space, so didn't include that. Um, unless you, I wanted to as part of that interpretation.
Which ones are you looking at? I know, but.
Oh, so you took out the re- okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to include that, I mean.
If you wanted to include that, all the space on this, it would be, would be fifty.
I don't know if it makes a difference, but we do plan to have, um, rotate rabbits so that we have, like, an area set up in that front space, what's called like the retail space. Um, so we would have a rabbit in there or we'd have a large breed maybe free roaming that space and rotate them.
So the, the planning commission, you can do a clarification that says that the, the, the gross floor area that we're considering this formula for is X. That is within your realm, hundred percent.
Consider it all, really. Cause I mean, cause we know it's grossly over, you know, stated that they need so much room. I mean, get them up to fifty with the, uh, if they just took all the square footage that they're gonna have on the site. So that would make it a little easier until either variants or change in the ordinance.
We get to that one.
Well, that's why I was asking her if it's gonna be an F.
It's about the fighting animals.
Caitlin, I do have a question also, um, so special land use stays with the land, correct?
Correct.
So they have special land use under this ordinance of fur bearing animals. Should they sell and somebody wanted to come in and put in a dog kennel? Technically, they could then.
Um, so that could be one of our conditions associated with the special land use, that it would be maintained under animals similar to rabbits. And that way, again, what you would do is in the event that somebody comes in and says, well, I would like to convert this from a rabbit, um, venue to a dog kennel, that would just be an amendment to their special land use, um, to change that condition.
Special land use, you can add whatever conditions are reasonable.
And you can modify them, um, especially with our new zoning ordinance, that will be a clearer process. But that's how I would address it. That would require coming back if you choose to have that as a, a condition.
Okay, so we're just on special land use now?
Yep, we're still on special land use.
How are you getting that number, DJ?
I ended up all these square footages of these buildings.
All right.
So.
But you, and how can you add the retail?
Caitlin.
He just did the, the boundary.
I know, but I, you add that.
This one, um.
Cause he did.
Are you, do you have more for your?
Um, so I guess the, the.
It's anything within the walls.
What I wanted to clarify before I get into the standards for approval of the special land use is, did you want to provide clarification for one through four on the special land use use requirements? So the first one being is, um, what is our gross floor area, is that the, the five thousand threshold? Um, in which then we're allowing fifty total ma- rabbits, is that?
Yes.
Yeah.
My vote.
Yeah.
Okay, that's general consensus is?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Um, next is talking about the soundproofing of the building and if the proposed soundproofing would be sufficient for the proposed rabbit.
The buildings sound like they're gonna be insulated so that they would be.
And so that's, that's the clarification, you're using standard insulation in those buildings.
Correct.
Um, so we would just want the applicant to note that on the application, that they are proposing standard instali- or insulation.
Insulation.
And that is the soundproofing that is being proposed and we consider that to be sufficient.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, three, um, is talking about the, um, floor material. Um, and so the, either plywood or, um, again, some other, other improved material if you want to, um, it sounds like the applicant is planning on doing some other hard surface. Um, and so that's something we can clarify with site plan review, that would be another appropriate condition to your special land use and we could address it at that point in time.
So we don't need to address it now, is that what you're saying?
I would say, is our general consensus that we are okay with the hard surface material, that concrete? She had mentioned a few other types of other hard surfaces, we would consider that sufficient and would forget that clarity during site plan review. I think there is three non-heads, can I get another one? Okay. Um, next is talking about parking, um, and so the formula is kennel runs as opposed to kennel s- um, spa- or kennel spaces? Or I guess I did it based on the number of animals we were anticipating, um, just trying to be fair where I could. Um, and so, but the planning commission, you have the discretion again to, um, mod- in, to clarify when the verbiage isn't clear, what a parking should be for a use, um, within our zoning ordinance.
But didn't she have eight, and my calculation was eight anyway?
Say that again?
You said it was eight.
Um, so if we use the forty, um, kennel space, um, philosophy, um, then you would require a total of eight parking spaces.
And that's what she has.
Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yeah. So this is actually a dimension line and then right next to it is another line for parking.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
So there's one fur bearing, or, unless we wanna reduce it.
So if we, the planning commission would like to clarify or confirm they agree with the impl- um, the interpretation of how to apply parking based on the provision, that eight total is sufficient. You can bless that, as it were.
Eight five.
Eight is a.
Uh, we're a blessing, alright, hurrah. Okay, um, so now to the, um, special land use standards, so in sixteen oh one, um, we have our approval standards. To justify an approval, we need to find support in all of these standards to justify denial, we need to identify which standard it does not meet and why. Um, so the first standard talks about the special land use's located size and its character that is orderly with the surrounding neighborhood, um, and meets within the zoning district, so the surrounding properties are, um, agricultural, they are single family homes. The applicant is proposing these, um, buildings, they do meet all of our accessory building requirements within that. Um, and so it is taking away from their personal accessory buildings, they are not getting additional accessory because they have this use. It's part of that whole formula. Um, uh, the proposed, um, hours of operation are unclear, but likely this operation's not planning to take place at nighttime hours. They're not proposing any outdoor activities and they do propose, um, their parking right in front of those, um, buildings there. Standard two talks about the proposed use, um, for vehicles and pedestrian traffic is not gonna be more hazardous. Um, it is anticipated this use would be a low impact regarding traffic. There's one new proposed driveway from the road, um, that is, um, for this specific use of this property. They are required to go through the road commission reviews, my understanding is they are in the process of that. Um, we can verify that through, um, the department of roads.
Caitlin, do you have this in the letter in the packet, the standards?
I was hoping it's in there, but if it's not, I apologize.
Yeah.
I don't see it.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It's all along in the book though.
I thought it was me.
It's still you.
Yeah.
If not, I can repeat something verbally, um, if we need to go back to it.
Last one.
Um, so the last one was talking about the, um, traffic and, um, pedestrian maneuverability on the site um, for this specific special land use.
Oh, I got it. Sorry.
Uh, the third standard is talking about the proposed uses, the location size and intensity and layout would eliminate any potential nuisances, um, such as dust, noise, um, fumes, vibrations. Um, so again, this is a low intensity operation, it's proposed to be indoors, um, unclear of hours of operation, but presumably not likely nearing night. Number four is that the proposed location of buildings and structures, um, any other landscaping is appropriate for the surrounding areas. Um, the applicant is proposing buildings within our requirements, there's, um, no, um, new screening proposed. I mean, they do have some existing trees, if the applicant chooses to have more trees at their leisure, they can. If the planning commission wants to require them, you could also require them for buffering purposes, um, that could be something we further discuss. Standard five is talking about the proposed, um, use is harmonious with the physical and economic aspects of adjoining properties. Um, so as a rescue, um, or that kennel's facility, it is consistent with agricultural or residential area around it. Um, and using that separate driveway from the single family home. Standard six is the proposed use, um, is necessary for public convenience when it's in that proposed location. It's located off a major thoroughfare and they are proposing a separate driveway. Standard seven is talking about the, the proposed use is designed, planned and located and operated to protect public health, safety and welfare. Um, so that's something, um, we can go through during the site plan review process, but they do meet all required setbacks and are would be required to meet all the different code requirements to maintain that. Standard eight is that the use, um, shall not be detrimental to the neighborhood in which the use is being proposed, either from the current standpoint or in the future, um, from a zoning district standpoint. So master plan plans this area to maintain agricultural, um, this proposed use would more than likely recommend to maintain the agricultural, um, field to the community. And with that, that's all the E standards. So I'm apologizing if it's somehow not in the packet, I didn't catch that.
So the, the whole point is that it's, it's the, so the size and characters in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood and we have, um, probably some concern about light and things, but, um, it looks just like an egg operation.
Correct.
Very much in harmony with the area.
Being a pole barn, it looks just like a residential operation, you don't know what's inside. And then there's no noise and no outdoor activity. That is quick parking and you're working with the road commission for your driveway?
Um, I'm, we have obtained a culvert permit already as far as working with, is that what you're referring to?
Yep.
Okay, yes, we've, we have that permit.
Okay.
It appears that they meet all the B eight standards for special land use, I don't see any concerns.
Do we put on the, um, type of animal for, uh, on this, at this part?
Um, and so, um, the next part would be if someone was formulating a motion to include the address, um, and for that fur bearing rescue, it meets all the standards. Conditions that, um, have otherwise potentially been discussed, um, again, the limiting of the animal, the fur bearing animal that we're permitting as part of this, um, contingent upon site plan review approval, which we'll discuss next. Um, those are, um, been discussed so far.
I'll make that motion.
Would you like to read?
I don't have the page, the one page, but contingent upon everything she just stated. I mean, we're gonna have to do it that way.
Um, so the motion then is to recommend approval to the township board for two one eight five zero Mc- uh, McPhel?
McFall.
McFall, sorry, road, um, for the fur bearing animal, um, use. Uh, because it meets all the section standards of section sixteen.
We don't have to include the property ID, do we?
No, the address is sufficient.
Yes.
Um, condition, um, conditionally upon the fur bearing animal permitted is rabbits or equivalent, um, species and they receive site plan review.
Good job.
So that was.
I'll second that motion.
I wrote that pretty good, eh?
Yeah.
It's a pretty good job. It's quicker.
Okay, Michelle, do you wanna reread that motion, see if we have everything covered eyes? I know, I was waiting for you, I know you were trying to write it, so.
Okay, so motion by Javard recommends approval to the township board, um, for two one eight five zero McFall for special land use because it meets se- section, the standards of section sixteen, um, conditionally for the fur bearing animals of rabbits or equivalent.
And site plan review.
And site.
Was that sixteen point one three, or three one?
Sixteen.
Point one.
No, three one.
Three ones, reasonable.
Sixteen point three one.
Um, no, that's the, those are the requirements of the fur bearing, the fur bearing animals.
The standards are sixteen oh one.
And so the sixteen oh one is the special land use standard.
Yeah, I just saw it now, okay, thank you.
And so.
So the fur bearing should be before we talk about the race. Cause it's, it's a supplement use for the fur bearing animals.
Here we have a motion on the table, is there any further discussion?
I think, I think we've got all the parts, right? And that was the sixteen oh three, is that?
Sixteen oh one.
Oh, one.
No, that's the special land use, but we're just, we're just saying fur bearing animals.
Yeah, that part sixteen.
That is the special land use.
Right.
Yep.
Recommend the special land use for fur bearing animals.
Like rabbits. Do you want, would you reread the motion? We'll do that, would you please reread the motion? So it's clear.
I think it's all, it's all in there.
While you're saying things and I'm not sure exactly what's in it.
The motion is to recommend approval to the township board for a special land use approval for bearing animals and rabbits or equivalent because it meets the section, the standards of section sixteen point zero one.
Contingent upon approved site plan.
Contingent upon site plan.
Okay.
Um, but we wanna switch the, um, animal, the, so you got the fur bearing right, but. Um but we wanna switch the um animal, the, so you got the fur bearing right, but the the rabbit and equivalent animal should be part of the conditions. Cause that's the condition, the the raising of fur bearing nails is the use title, that's the special land use.
It has to be rabbits.
And we're further restricting the type.
Any further discussion, is everyone good with that?
You're gonna choke me.
Caitlin's happy, I'm happy.
You can't just do that joke.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Motion is carried.
So use.
Alright, so part one.
Alright.
Alright, so now we go to the site plan review.
Yeah.
Um and so um there are two components to site plan review, there is informational requirements. The planning commission can waive these pieces of information if you deem it either sufficient um or um this information isn't necessary to verify compliance. Um the other portion is zoning compliance, um in which there is some discretion in there. Um but otherwise, um there are some other requirements. So um the first part of site information is the existing improvements, so all existing improvements on the neighboring properties in two hundred feet are not specifically shown on the site plan.
Is this in the letter too?
I hope. No, this is definitely in there.
The site plan?
This is, my other letter is definitely in there.
I got the site plan.
I got that letter.
Cause I. It might be maybe somewhere else in? Ordering maybe accident?
So it's a, you did, you got a site plan checklist?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, that's, I thought it was a review from the plan, I wrote.
Sorry, the dates are the same too between all the applications, it's the May ninth review letter.
Nope, I got the wrong thing.
Okay, thank you.
Oops, sorry.
Alright, so that's May ninth, May ninth.
Yes, it's also May ninth.
Thank you.
It's May eighth.
You can follow along with me.
Okay.
If not, I'll take notes and we can circle back.
We're good.
Okay.
Okay.
Um so ag, it's the existing improvements, those zoning ordinance requires everything within two hundred feet to be shown on the site plan, it does not. Waitrim has provided an aerial map, um that does show every improvement at two hundred feet. The planning commission consider consider that sufficient, um if you choose to. Um number two is talking about the site plan provides the um label for the front yard setback at a hundred and ten feet from the thoroughfare. Um so it's just missing that dimensional component and so it's still in compliance for that, um but it's informational. Three is talking about the verification of signage. Um so verification of signage is proposed at this time, is not provided. Um they um it can choose to waive that to be done administratively through the building department and would meet whatever those requirements are. Um and so, or they just note that they aren't proposing one at this time. Um so that's just informational clarification, but it's common applicants defer that until later on in the process, through the administrative process. And then last one is site drainage, so um storm water retention, the detention um isn't specifically shown as far as topography. Um so that is something that's um the township engineer did identify also in their review letter, um needing that information for the next step in the review process. Did you want to talk about site informational components now, or would you like to continue the rest of the um ordinance?
Commissioners, what would you like? Any questions on what Caitlin has just been through?
Are we gonna require those informational components right now or?
So the only discretionary one, I would say, is one, if you're gonna accept the waitrim provided aerial map as sufficient because otherwise the site doesn't show everything within two hundred feet.
No, do you do that for for other applicants that come in, provide us?
I typically provide an aerial, um because um um typically unless there's something significant is giving you context to the area. Um so they do provide adjacent to their property, you can see where those are to ascertain what's right there. Two hundred feet um is much farther than what their site plan currently shows. So you can consider the aerial sufficient. To give you context.
And you do that, and you provide that for each applicant, that's, I guess that's what, I just wanted to make sure that it's done equally, equally, yep.
Yep, so that would be the only um waiver component that would be discretionary, if you consider it acceptable.
We could waive that.
Well, you consider acceptable.
Acceptable, that we would accept that.
Okay, I saw four head nods, is that accurate? Okay, alright, so number one, perfect, alright. Next is talking about zoning compliance. Um so for building appearance in section two oh five, um principal buildings that are non-residential buildings are required to have, um that are within two hundred feet of the front property line are required to have predominantly brick walls in the front. Um or other approved materials determined by the planning commission. So as provided in your packet, um they're not proposing predominantly brick in the front, I believe there is a little brick. There is some bricking, if I remember correctly, on one of the buildings. Um so that is included in your packet, there is some, but it would not be considered predominant. Um and so the planning commission has the discretion from a design standpoint, they are proposing that um trimming along the entire building as opposed to just the front facade. Um so we can discuss these one by one, or if you would like me to go through all of them.
We can, uh let's do one by one, so it'll be taken care of, so appearance of the building material is unclear.
Um no, they did provide it, um so it's just, it's the per, the front face is not predominantly brick.
But I think that the surface area, the windows take, and the windows and door take up such a large portion of the of the front area that I and the brick is not over fifty percent of the, the Wayne's coating's not over fifty percent, but is it acceptable?
There you go.
Yep, so the planning commission can't accept the glass um and the bricking, uh which would be the predominant.
The glass and the brick together makes it predominant and then then you wouldn't have it up there.
So that would be a planning commission, you can discretionally approve as provided.
Are you good with that?
I'm fine.
The front face of the building.
Looks great.
Okay, the facing of the building, we're good, okay, so. Check that one off, okay.
Uh next is talking about the driveways, there is a new proposed driveway um for this specific operation, so based on section two, two point two one and two four, the planning commission does have the ability to require other road improvements or traffic study. Um as I mentioned, the the road um, Department of Roads is involved in um their jurisdiction of the road driveway. Um but does the planning commission want to require this information or it's sufficient?
That's sufficient, I'm fine with it.
Is that the majority?
It's road commission's problem, no traffic.
They 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 have to get approval for the driveway.
Correct, they still have to go through the.
Right.
Oh yeah.
But not be on that, traffic study or. If you're asking about the traffic and.
Correct.
Right.
So we are not going to require additional info on number two.
We don't expect a lot of traffic.
Okay, uh number three is talking about landscaping, so there are um s- um, a note should be simply added, so any disturbed areas, they're gonna provide that gra- um ground cover back, um that I believe is their intention, but um we just want that note added.
I thought that was on the, add the note that was on, we have ground cover?
Correct, any dis- undisturbed areas, I did not see that.
Right here.
Where should that be?
Uh it'll just be noted, yep.
No, I was looking at this.
It should be noted on the site plan, the ground cover will be provided in undisturbed areas.
It's, it does say it right here, all disturbed areas during construction will be.
Oh, right there. All disturbed areas. Repair facade.
Facade.
Oh, thank you for that, oh, oh.
It's in note one.
Thank you for mentioning that. Um, one of the things that has happened since the May ninth letter is you did get a revised set of plans. This letter is one version outdated, so I, I, they have addressed that concern.
Thank you.
Thank you for being diligent to have on that. Um so, apologize for not mentioning that earlier. Mentioned it before the meeting.
You told it to me, she didn't know.
Forgot to say it during.
You're very on the ball.
Okay, um next is talking about exterior lighting, so there is proposed wall mounting as shown on the site plan. Um it is required to be downward facing and shielded, um the proposed on the initial site plan would not be considered downward facing or shielded. Um in the new submittal, um they are, um and so that would, correct, yep, those are considered.
This one's a new one.
The full cutoff wall packs, those are the downward.
So they would have to be downward facing, so a s- a standard wall pack would not be permissible.
They have the full cutoff wall packs now, that's the downward, right.
Right, what's this one say?
So is it the, it's the graphic to the, to the, yeah, it's the graphic that's shown on the site plan, correct?
Yes, correct.
Um so assuming that, again, looking at the um zero foot candle reading where those are, that would otherwise be in compliant there.
Zero foot candles at the bo- at the boundaries, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Um and it would protrude into the parking lot area, generally speaking, and meet our averages. Um so next is talking about our parking lot. Um so um gravel driveway, um parking lot areas per section six point oh three E um only allow secondary parking areas that are intended for storage to be gravel. Um as the planning commission does know, there are some different gravel um parking lots in the township. Those are specifically regarding agro business uses. And so they are allowed to have gravel under this use or that zoning district, I'm not aware of that being discretionary. Um the applicant on their site plan did indicate they would be looking for variance from the zoning board of appeals for the surface material.
Of the parking?
Correct, cause otherwise it is required to be impaved, yep, with our current requirements.
Is that asphalt milling, so is that required paved or is it?
That would not be considered paved.
Okay, it's still permeable.
Correct.
So why don't we have a discussion?
Why do we want it paved?
Alright, so one at a time, what was that?
I can't hear you.
I, I don't know why we would want it paved, we would want it to be um permeable for stormwater.
And if there was discretion, I would let you know, um.
There's not, so that's.
Good.
And that's something in our new zoning ordinance that we are planning on addressing in our ag district.
Okay.
Um and so then the last one is those special land use um fur bearing animal requirements, which we already went over, um determining those sufficient. Um so, um any questions on the review process?
So this is required the paving.
The paving, yep, number five.
It's, it's just required that they pave that parking lot?
That's right.
Yeah.
Um and they are, the applicant has already identified that they're planning on getting a variance for that matter. And so that's something, um if the planning commission was looking for deliberation towards an approval, that would be a contingency if they do get that variance. Um they would move along, if they did not, they would be required to pave it.
So if we made a motion for a contingent on the current site plan approval, we'd have to have a contingent upon that variance.
Correct.
And at that time, they would, if they're going before the ZBA, would they also go for the variance in the uh the capacity?
No, we already solved that, um the, well, so if they did.
Well, it's up to fifty, but if they wanted to take it up to sixty.
Correct, so the fifty animals, but I, I think the applicant will probably talk internally on if they need to do that. But yes, they could go for both of those variances. You could consider wording the condition to say, uh addressing all outstanding um items in the May ninth letter um either through compliance or the approvals of a variance through the zoning board of appeals. If you did that as a condition, that way it's a little open ended.
So on paving the parking area, is it just the parking spots that need to be paved, or the whole driveway needs to be paved?
Um driveway as well, cause it's part of the maneuvering lane.
Okay, so.
So the approval standards for a site plan review, um again, this is final action by the planning commission, it is not a recommendation. Um is in section four point zero one, standard A talks about vehicle access and circulation. Um again, they'll require any permits um located on site based on the parking. And maneuverability, it would appear people would be able to move along in on site. B is talking about the relationship with surrounding properties, so this per, site plan would not negatively impact surrounding properties regarding screening, um traffic, um emergency vehicle access. And so again, they are providing different um surrounding um agricultural and single family areas and proposing to maintain existing vegetation. Um C is talking about the relationship of natural features, um there are not significant natural features other than their onsite pond. Um they are not proposing to be directly located there and we'd have to verify um stormwater compliance. Um two other reviews that were in your packet that um were not conducted by myself, but um colleagues within the profession um is your township engineer. Um don't know if you would like me to speak to that real quickly?
If you would, yeah, would be good.
The best of my engineering capabilities.
You're going over Spalding's?
That's correct, Balding Decker um is our township engineer, Taylor. I'm looking at the wrong document.
Would you like to copy right here?
No, 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 I got it, hi, thank you. Um her date letter is dated May nine, or May sixth, if that helps. Um so in general, um regarding the site, um engineering stage of the site plan review, they would wanna verify drainage as well as grading. Uh regarding water, they would wanna verify with the fire department if they wanna require a dry well. Regarding sanitary sewer, um that is something that um they would verify the septic field um and if the county would require that new septic field and verify compliance with that. D is talking about stormwater drainage, and so because the property being disturbed would be larger than one acre, they would be required to have some type of onsite retention um of that stormwater. Um and so you can use roadside river or rain gardens or things of that nature, again, dealing with that. Um impervious surfaces, that's a, um it depends on the paving or not, what that capacity would be um potentially. And then um also noting in the letter is the existing property is accessible from McFall Road um and at that entrance, um they would need additional details to verify that it meets our engineering plan reviews. They mentioned a bunch of um county reviews um that would be required regarding the septic well, roads, stormwater, if they were to waive it at the county level or not, and then sediment control. The other review letter you received was from our fire department. Um and so they are looking at the road apparatus regarding the um dead end driveway um not exceed a hundred and fifty and it would be a hundred and twenty feet based on that section and so sorry, I'm reading and trying to talk at the same time, um. And so they would like a little bit more space because they don't wanna have to turn around in the parking spaces. The next note is talking about the trees um for, to be removed for construction, verifying that they have clearance for their fire apparatuses. All exits are required to have exterior um lighting requirements. Um then they have some different life saving standpoints as part of the building plan review. Um additional information that will be verified later on. The floor plan provided now um is not sufficient for that level review, which typically happens later in this review process. Uh with that, um that is the synopsis of that letter.
Okay.
We are good with that. Shouldn't nothing make a dream in their, in their reviews that we need to add a contingency for approval?
Um so it depends how much you wanna know what's going on with drainage. Um so that can be handled administratively, um there is sufficient area on the site to manage that. Um and that is something that is going to be verified. The capacity as far as the material, that's a major question mark there, um to verify compliance that way.
Okay. Does that make sense, with the drainage and the variance they're going for?
I can't hear you.
She asked about drainage, um for stormwater and she, and we're discussing going for a variance for the parking lot anyway to a if not, a non-impervious or.
Oh, I couldn't hear what you guys were saying.
What's the word, water goes through it?
Impervious, so it's pervious then?
It's pervious, yes. Rain, gravel instead of cement.
That's something she has come through a special land use on.
Uh variance.
Variance.
Right, so that's what we already talked about, so it's the same thing. So if we're gonna approve, propose the site plan for approval, we would do it contingent upon those two variances with the variance that you said up earlier. with the variance that you said earlier.
Um, so it.
Oh, based on the May ninth, um.
Review letter.
Review letter.
Um, having compliance or receiving variances from the zoning board of appeals. Um, other appropriate conditions would be also compliance with the fire depart- or the fire department's review letter and the township engineers. And I can give you dates of those letters if you don't have those directly at your fingertips.
Is there a building grade on the plans at all?
Um, so there is not, um, so there's topography shown, um, as, as far as the actual elevation and where that final building grade is, I don't believe that's specifically noted.
And that's supposed to be correct?
Correct. Correct, cause one of our requirements is that the water flows away from building, which is part of that drainage informational component, that's of concern.
Right. And then, let's see, another thing, let's see, pathways, if the public is entering, shouldn't it be a sidewalk rather than gravel or wood chips?
Correct, so from their main building, um, shown on their site plan, the parking lot, um, goes right up to the building, and so there is no pedestrian maneuverability there, and so as part of our review standards, um, that is something that you could consider, we're desiring that change that would be fundamental, um, that we could require.
So we really need a new site plan to cover?
It's up to you, you can also say it's a condition that you would like to see a, um, pedestrian space, um, along the front of the building and the parking lot, um, to ensure safety.
So we could approve this site plan contingent upon that space?
That being noted, and administratively, we would verify that's there before it moves forward, or you could request.
Administratively. Or we could post, we could postpone until we receive a new site plan that addresses.
Correct. That's correct.
You could re, you can pull the car right up to the building now, block a door.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
I, I think we should probably have a site plan that addresses.
Or slide into it.
We got the lighting issue, we got that, um, that's done.
We got the lighting.
Well, now the detention, isn't that gonna be handled during engineering?
It can be, yes, it depends what level of info you want at this level, but yes, that will be verified, um, and ensured to meet our standards.
Comply with the new six.
And there, there is room on site for it, um, however they choose to address it.
So we need looking for a building grade that's not shown, the pathway for the public. What else do we have?
And the pathway for the public's the one in front of the building?
Yep, so we need that addressed, right, on a new site plan, and a building grade, cause that's not shown.
Okay. Yeah.
So the door's not shown. There's just one labeling thing in there, the front yard setback, it's just not labeled, number two.
Front yard setback?
Yeah, it's a hundred, it's a hundred and ten feet, it's just not labeled, it's just a symbol.
That's right.
Yeah.
So is that updated, hundred and five, six, oh, so this is.
I think it was.
It's a new plan, it's not checked off, but it is on the plan now.
One ten, right.
So we don't need the front.
That's cause the letter is updated.
No, I don't need that.
Oh, okay.
Now I see it, thank you.
Yeah, it's on, um.
And the pathway.
And then they do show on the new site plan a proposed signage location, um, but I, if you could check the notes to see if that's also deferred, I thought it was.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, Kayla?
Um, they noted on the new site plan a potential location for a sign, um, I'm checking in the notes.
Proposed, yeah, they do have that, sixty-five feet back.
Um. If they plan on doing that in administrative, um, we don't have any other details on the site or on that sign, so that would be what they'd have to do, is get that reviewed by the building department.
There's a sign, yeah.
Correct.
Conditions. So, now, is that septic, is it just the same septic?
No.
That's a.
They have a future septic area.
Yeah.
Septic and then the true septic.
And, uh.
Yep. Yeah, that's, that's good.
So it's really just the parking lot, parking in the pedestrian access.
Yeah, but that's gonna be.
Yeah, it's gotta be shown, it's gotta be redrawn.
Yeah, I.
And the grade.
And the grade.
Oh, it's from the grade.
There's no.
There's nothing.
There's none under.
We got topography lines, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the building. Even the future's empty.
Yeah, we just have the cut sheets.
Right, right.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so at this time, if there's no further discussion on this, would somebody care to make a motion, we can postpone, we can deny, we can approve. I personally would like to see a new site plan with these, these corrections, especially for the safety sake of the public. But you can't do that in administrative review? No? While we.
That's the motion, you wanna have it brought back?
I can't make a motion.
Yes, you can.
No, a chair doesn't make a motion. Never have, have we, DJ?
Usually not.
No.
Let's try to get somebody off their bus.
Is that a personal?
Or Robert's rule?
We never have, it's just, never have, the chair.
Really?
But it's not Robert's rule.
She is not making the motion, someone else will need to.
So, the, the motion is to postpone for the new, a new site plan showing the, uh, pedestrian, what was we calling it, access or?
Um, uh, uh, pa- pathway from the parking lot to the building.
Pathway, pathways.
Pedestrian pathway, in front of the building.
And the building grade.
And the building grades. And then we also have to, um, s- make a contingent on the variance for the paving of the driveway and the parking.
Be for the main night letter.
Does that cover everything?
Yeah.
And you wanna include engineering and, well, you're not addressing their concerns potentially as well.
You don't need engineering. Okay, so we're, we're basically, we're postponing this for a new site plan, showing the pedestrian pathway, um, the building grades, and contingent on receiving variance for the paving of the parking and driveway.
Now, are you requiring them to get the variance approval prior to coming back, or can they have the application submitted and still be pending before they come back?
I do submitting.
Uh, that, we do contingent on variances all the time.
Okay, so you're okay if they have, that they don't have to have the approval by the time it comes back to you, okay, just checking timelines.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm seconding that.
Okay.
I guess I made that the Joe seconded.
Yeah. All, any further discussion?
Michelle got it all?
Michelle, why are you reading?
Motion to postpone for a new site plan that shows the pedestrian pathway from the parking lot to the building, show, to also show building grades, and then contingent on the variance for paving of the parking lot and driveway.
Thank you. And the, the main night letter?
We don't need to based on that detail.
Okay, and that, we don't need the engineering, I forget, okay.
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
By, opposed?
I, I don't want to vote for, vote for it. I'd, I'd rather just, uh, do the contingencies unless.
She's abstaining. And not make them come back?
No.
I, I agree not make them come back. Well, you already voted.
Yeah.
She changed her vote to a no, so two no's.
A no. Okay.
Two no's.
But the A's win.
Yeah.
So it is a postponement on the site plan.
They wanna make them come back. Okay. So we do need a new site plan for those. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have?
Nine thirty-nine.
Nine thirty-nine, do we wanna, that we table that?
That was gonna be my question at the moment.
I propose that we table that, uh, ord- zoning ordinance amendments.
Can we have a question first?
Of course.
No. Well.
I meant chair.
It sho- it shows on here that changes from the previous de- draft are in yellow, and did we run out of yellow ink, or are there just no changes?
Oh, I'm so sorry, um, I.
But that's why we used to table.
Geez, well, yeah, when I marked that up, um, I was prepared just to verbally tell that as opposed to where it actually happened in yellow. Um, the, the biggest thing that changed is that we took out the wedding venue components associated with it. Um, we also took out reference, uh, definitions, um, at the very end, um, so we put those in there initially for context when we were drafting it. I removed those, cause we're actually not making changes to those definitions, the only ones remaining are the ones we're doing.
Okay.
Um, but what I took out based on our subcommittee discussions was removal of the wedding barns as its own use, um, and it was.
It's separate completely.
We're not going to address this at this point in time, um, event venues or event barns would be something we discussed during the zoning ordinance update, so I apologize, um, I forgot that at the top with the legend, um, but those are the changes from the last draft you saw.
Thank you. Is this gonna be a lot of discussion, or like?
Um, I think one of our pivotal members.
No, but I'm just saying, I have to request one.
So one of the pivotal members is part of, um, requesting to pending is not in attendance tonight, um, so I, I guess it's at your leisure if you decide to move forward, or we have nineteen minutes until we have to make a motion to extend our meeting, um, it is up to you.
Well, at this point, since we don't have it highlighted.
I'll make a motion to table the, uh.
Oh, second that.
I made that motion.
You finish.
Before discussion. Yeah, or you did make that motion to table.
Yeah, but if we approve it now, Steve won't hold us up, we can just approve.
No, no, no.
I'm just kidding.
All in favor on tabling this until next month, and?
Yeah, we should have Steve input.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Um, can we make sure that everybody gets a copy of it with the highlighted yellow, so they know what changes?
Yep, I understand.
That would be good.
On its own pages.
Yeah.
I just deleted stuff, so I didn't, um, it didn't.
Highlighted just deleted. Okay, next on our agenda, we have public comments, are there any public comments?
Yes, uh, public. Oh, Julie, if the comments. The comments that I wanted to make were to address some of the concerns voiced by some of the neighbors here, but they're not here, so.
Okay.
Well, it'll get documented if you address it, so they can read it.
Okay. Okay, sure, um, the, there wa- there was comments made, I think the biggest misconception of it is this fifty rabbit a day thing, um, and to clarify that, at no time ever will we or any rescue that I know of be able to take in fifty rabbits a day, we don't take in one rabbit a day.
All of once.
We sometimes go a month without taking in any rabbits, and we sometimes take in two to four rabbits in one month. Um, the comment that got misunderstood is the initial post that I put on, uh, the I Love Our Maida page, from the rescue page. Um, there was a lot of enthusiasm in, I, I think some, before I introduced myself personally, which in hindsight, I should've introduced myself personally before, um, making a post from the rescue page, because that looked a little more commercial. Um, but the comment that was made, the sentence they're speaking about is, we get asked to take up to fifty rabbits a day at times, not every day. Um, I was trying to illustrate the need for rabbit rescues, um, the problem that is out there, um, and that, and I also put in the following sentence, at no point, there's, there's not enough, something along the lines of, there's not enough rescues to even make really a den in the need that is there. Um, at no time did I say we accommodate that request, um, and so I did do a follow-up post in the I Heart and Made a Page from my own personal Facebook account, introducing myself, my family, and clarifying some of those concerns. Now, obviously I have no idea who saw it, if the same people that were concerned initially saw that post. Um, I did add up, we, we had a really good response, a lot of welcoming, um, it was like eighty-nine positive reactions and twenty-seven positive comments, not a single negative reaction or comment, um, but yeah, we absolutely would never be able to accommodate anything like that. We're a small rescue, and we might take in two rabbits one month, no rabbits one month, six or seven. When, on the rare, uh, the less frequent occasions that we've tackled big cases, as I said earlier, it's taken multiple rescues across the state, and over a six-month period to clear eighty-eight rabbits out of one home, and we, um, our rescue took in fifteen of those eighty-eight, and we took them in over the span of a few months. Um, the, those are the numbers, I know some people got concerned with that, we get requested to take in, um, we get asked all the time. Um, the lighting's already been, been addressed, um, I'm not sure where this term party room came from, I'm not sure where that was seen. Um, I don't actually know what that's about, we don't have a party room, um.
Damn.
No, and we won't be, yeah, we won't, um, be up at night, I, I have kids, my youngest two are autistic, I'm tired all the time, all the time. They didn't sleep last night, I didn't sleep last night, I, we don't do anything at nighttime. Um, we do have a few volunteers, the, the traffic that can be expected, or maybe one volunteer, some one, some days to another day, if I'm lucky.
We're the, the volunteers, I'm not a great volunteer.
She won't be out that much, those two will be out once or twice a week.
I just wanna help her out here, I'm Jessica Hartman, I, um, drive over from Davison over by Flint, um, I'm one of the board members. Um, I know one of the concerns that I wanna address, um, if you don't mind, Erin.
Sure.
Um, one of the things I heard here tonight, and it, to me, it kind of, it struck me, was about, um, disease and, and sick rabbits, um, and quarantining. Um, that's kind of something that got me because, hi, I'm the quarantine person, I'm the sick rabbit person, um, I have, and they're not necessarily even in quarantine, but my husband and I kinda specialize with that rabbits that need medication. Um, they're not necessarily still sick, we've had these fosters for a long time, but they require daily medication. And sometimes the rabbits that we have, cause they're really sensitive, they get sick, my husband, who is an, a cost engineer for General Motors, will get up every two hours at night to feed these rabbits. Um, I have fourteen rabbits in my house, I have two dogs, I have two cats, I have three sons. Um, it's a round-the-clock operation in our home, with medicating, feeding, and whatnot. I have forever foster's that will never get adopted because they're sick, I have one rabbit who's blind, who will never get adopted because she has parasite, we love her, she's great. Um, so, that happens sometimes, but when there's rabbits like that, we're the house, hi, that's us. Um, they don't go in the general population, they're ours.
I will add that in the new rescue center, there will be, um, an intake room and a med room, and they will be quarantined, they will have doors to the outside, and rabbits do come in and they do have to be, every rabbit that comes in, regardless of where they come from, um, they do have to be quarantined. Rabbits don't carry diseases that can be transmitted to humans or even other species, the only thing that could be transmitted would be like a common, um, worm that all farm animals can get, and we do treat everyone routinely for that. Um, and the only vaccine they're required to have is for the R H D V two virus, which has not hit Michigan yet, but it is in other states, and therefore we do not take in any rabbits from other states if they do not have the vaccine for that, um, and that's how we, and we very rarely take in rabbits from other states, very rarely. And we have to go through a process with animal control to do that, and it is, um, overseen, you know, by animal control to make sure it's all done properly. Um, so, tho- those are some of the bigger, the bigger issues, there's, there should be no concern for disease, there should be no concern for traffic. Um, nobody's gonna be partying at night, um, or during the day, and, let's see if there was any, um.
Do we need signage and lighting?
The signage and lighting, the lighting's been addressed, it, it was, um, whatever our land surveyor initially put the wrong kind of lighting, I don't even know what he put. Um, I know it will be downward facing, I know we had to correct that, it's been corrected. Um, I don't intend to have lights on all night unless it's required over the exterior doors, but I do plan to turn those lights off at night anyway. Um, and the signage, the, the reason for the, we're, we're proposing a sign, um, the reason for it is because we have one address, and essentially we have our home on the left, it, it's, our, our land is too wide and five back in terms of acreage, so it almost looks like two adjacent lots, but it's all our property, so the rescue will be on the one, and our home will be on the other. And we really don't want people pulling into our driveway, and on our driveway where, where our post is, it says our ad. And on our driveway where, where our post is, it says our address, and so if people see two one eight five zero next to this driveway and they're going to two one eight five zero, they're going to pull into our driveway and knock on our home. And just like our neighbors want privacy from the rescue, we want privacy from the rescue too. Even though it's my rescue, we don't want our personal family to be disturbed. So we want to have a privacy trees between the rescue and our neighbor adjacent to us, and we want to have privacy trees between the rescue and our home so that we can have also privacy from rescue. So the signage is just to let people know their, which driveway to pull into, and I am happy to put on the signage that we have no normal business hours, that everything is by appointment only. Nobody can just come in and knock on the rescue door and say, hey, I'm here.
Right.
Yeah, we don't want that. I can't accommodate that. If they did, I would have to be in the rescue building.
Right.
Whatever those hours are, if it was eight to five or nine to whatever, I'd have to be in there, and I can't because I also homeschool my children, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I think one more comment.
Sure.
I just wanted to clarify a, a few things, because my other neighbors were here as well, and they had some concerns. We're on nine acres to the west of them, so a good portion of our acreage, they were ten-acre lots, and I guess the man who owned our property years ago was part of zoning or building or something, he sold an acre for his daughter. That's where Doug and Lynn live. Their main concerns are on the garage side of their house, they have no windows, they have nothing. To be honest, they've lived there three to four years and have caused trouble for a lot of the neighbors. I know they have concerns, but a lot of it is not warranted. They, they portray a lot of that out to the surrounding neighbors. As far as the Zemans, I've known them for seventeen years. I have nothing bad to say about them, they have equipment and different things, like he said, he ran a business many years. Tons of equipment, stuff in their yards, and they do their own thing, we do our own thing, and that's kind of how it's, is out there. We just all kind of do our own thing, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Real quick, I wanted to address the letter that you read was from John Rene Gabrielle. I don't know them, I haven't met them yet, they said adjacent to us. I'm assuming they have to be then behind us, because all of our neighbors next to us and even across the road from us are, were here tonight. Behind us, we're five acres back, in the back, eight, maybe six to eight acres is a existing hayfield. We plan to switch out the type of hay that grows there, so it's hay suitable for our rabbits, but maintain the hayfield. So if they are behind us, they're essentially five acres or four acres away from us. And what they're adjacent to, however many, six to eight acres that is a hayfield will continue to be a hayfield. So nothing next to their land is actually changing, and I don't see how that could, can affect them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no, or do public comments, a motion would be in order?
Unless you make it.
Unless you want to take it.
I'll make the motion, it goes me.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried.
Is that Maureen Alex?
Yep, nine fifty-four.
Close.
Yep.